Bring up the expected return to in-person meetings at the outset.
Certainly. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:00 PM. The date is Tuesday, February 22, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Paul Jordan.
Yeah.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Who's an Axelrod?
Here.
Josh Daly.
Here.
Peter Giestefano.
Here.
Robin Paffier is absent and Maria Mack is here. Next agenda item is the consent agenda. This consists of approval of minutes, January 11, 2022 work session, and January 25, 2022, regular session. Before we get into that, I just want to let anyone who is in the audience this evening know that our first technical agenda item, which is a public hearing for major multi-household land development conceptual master plan, Magnolia Lane, has been continued. Jamie, would you like to perhaps read the request from the applicant?
If you give me a moment.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, we're in receipt of a letter addressed to the Town of South Kingstown Planning Board, James D. Rabbit, AICP Planning Director, and Jay Parker, Principal Planner, regarding Magnolia Lane conceptual master plan application, plat 57-1, lot 121, Jay Thomas Investments. Dear Mr. Rabbit and Mr. Parker, the applicant Jay Thomas Investments is requesting a continuance of the above referenced application from this evening's agenda to the March agenda for the purposes of considering alternative approaches. Thank you for your assistance. Sincerely, William R. Landry. Mr. Landry is legal counsel to Jay Thomas Investments. And we received that this afternoon.
Thank you, Jamie. Do we have a date for that particular March meeting? I know we have several coming up in March.
March 22.
22. Thank you. And was there any reference to an extension that went along with that request?
Not, not specific other than the 22nd meeting. We will coordinate that with council, our council and their council.
Thank you. I would, I would entertain a motion from board members to continue this item to our March 22 meeting.
And Maria, just to note for the public that members of the public should prepare to attend in person that day because the current executive order under which the planning board is meeting remotely tonight expires on March 19. And whether or not that order is extended, it's my understanding that the town may be moving to in-person meetings in March.
Thank you, Amy. Duly noted. That said, would someone like to make a motion to continue this item?
Maria, I'll make that motion to continue this to our next meeting. I also want to acknowledge and thank the neighboring property owners who had questioned the land suitable for development. And I say that not because I want to see a project go a certain way, but I think it's important that the board works with the most accurate information.
Thank you. Motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Paul. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands, please.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's continue on to our consent agenda. This consists of the minutes referred to earlier, January 11, 2022 work session, January 25, 2022, regular session, and the report of the administrative officer. If there are no additions or corrections, would someone like to make a motion? Susan?
Could I ask that we remove December 14 from the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Looking the wrong thing. January 25. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. All right, January 25. You have the floor, Susan.
So in the minutes during the public hearing for Magnolia Lane, in the second paragraph, it states, "It was agreed that zoning would take precedence." And I think I'd like to ask everyone their recollection from that meeting. I know we talked about whether the subdivision regulations or the zoning would take precedence for the issues of setback, but I don't think we ever decided that, nor I don't remember ever agreeing that zoning would take precedence in this case.
It's my recollection, Susan, that the board was made aware of, from special legal counsel, that fact rather than any specific agreement. Don't know how others feel about that. Jamie?
Madam Chair, we can check the tapes during that second meeting and reflect. I would tend to agree with the observation of Susan that there may have been a statement issued. But I'm not sure if there was consensus or agreement on the statements made. So I think the most conservative approach to that, instead of going by memory, we can, as your staff, review the tape and correct that appropriately.
Thank you, Jamie. It's also worth noting that at the bottom of each page, it says approved on February 22, 2022. So that should be corrected as well. But we will table this item. And would someone like to make a motion relative to the remaining items on the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
We have a motion from Paul. Do we have a second? Second from Josh. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next agenda item. Public hearing, major multi-household land development project preliminary plan, the residences on Holly. And for those of you who may have tuned in late, the previous item, Magnolia Lane, has been continued to our March 22 meeting. So back to residences on Holly, which has been continued from January 25, 2022. Is there anyone representing the applicant? Jay, do we have somebody?
Yes. Yes, one moment. We, Josh, should be joining us.
Yes, I'm here, Jay. Maria, I'm here. Josh Rosen, Principia Engineering, representing Mr. Hallberg on the project. Obviously Attorney Kenyon was with us last, last month, and he is actually flying right now. So we have myself and Mr. Hallberg available as a follow-up for this, for this hearing right now.
Thank you. We can hear you very well. Please continue.
Thanks. So I just, by way of a summary, we had a couple of items that we followed up on between last month's hearing and tonight, one of which was a packet of information that was submitted to the planning department. And I'm sure the board received the copy. We were asked to review our stormwater analysis and basically represent what the change in drainage calculations would be if our driveway and parking surface areas within the development were to be modeled as an impervious surface versus the provided design, which was a porous or permeable surface. So we provided that information. We also confirmed and we had our surveyor go back out to the project site and ensure that certain property line stakes were set or were uncovered and visible on the northern property line of this development parcel and the westerly line where it abuts some of the R10 neighbors. So that was done as well. I think there was a visual that, you know, some people wanted to review where the vegetation landed with respect to those property lines. And again, on the stormwater side, Mr. Murphy, I believe, had asked a question based on maintenance of the porous pavement, know what would happen or what the calculations would look like and if they could accommodate if that system were in fact impervious, in a sense, if the maintenance were neglected. In, in that summary, I'll just recap that stormwater end of it. We basically confirmed that at the size of the infiltration area, we have safely accommodated all storms from the one year up through the 100-year storm event with that infiltration area when we model our driveways and parking surfaces as impervious. That would be with a runoff coefficient of 98. So we added that surface area back in. There was, there is no enlargement to that infiltration area that's necessary to safely handle those flows. And the post-development runoff to our design point through that infiltration basin into Oak Street is still less than the pre-development conditions. Again, this design was also originally approved, reviewed and approved by DEM as well in the Ripley's Department. And obviously with 100-year storm, we've exceeded most of the town's requirements as well. So I think unless Mr. Hallberg has anything to add, if Jay, if you could add, maybe Scott to the conversation. I don't know if he wanted to add anything regarding any of the follow-up items that were requested of us from the last meeting.
Mr. Hallberg, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thanks, Josh.
Yep. No, I don't. I think Josh covered it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
And Josh, before we open it up to questions from board members, do you have any drawings relative to this revision that you need to share with the board?
I don't at this time.
Thank you. Questions, comments from board members?
Actually, Madam Chair. For doing those calculations, being the sensitive area that it is and the problems that the neighbors have, we appreciate the fact that you're not relying on maintenance to make the situation better.
Absolutely. Our pleasure.
Paul? I have a copy of the drainage summary. I am completely unqualified to interpret it or even to understand it at all. I'm sure Rich, Rich Berman has had a chance to look at this. I'd just like to hear from him.
You know, I only, I mean, we just received it, but within a day or so ago, I guess, but the, the previous submission still, it met similar standards in this one. Well, I mean, let me, let me take a step back. So Josh, the pervious areas that we're talking about, the impervious versus pervious driveway, most of that went out to the road, out to Holly anyways, right?
There's, there was a split. There was a certain square footage that was included within our infiltration area.
Right. So I mean, my, my point is I suspected that it wouldn't have any effect on what's going on. Those driveways, I don't believe, has, have as much effect to the, you know, to the drainage situation out there. Anyways, I believe we already had an increase going to Holly with the pervious, but it's really due to the sidewalks that we're requesting as part of this application, which I believe is a, is a, is a public benefit. And I think that, you know, the town can certainly absorb that volume of water and that flow of water. It's not a big deal. So, you know, generally speaking, and, and, you know, normally, so, so our standard in town is 10-year storm. We asked that they meet a 10-year storm. So if you come in with a, with an undeveloped parcel in town, you're asked to meet a 10-year storm. It's very small. We know that. We're, we're working to change that. DEM standard is, is a 100-year storm on peak flow. We ask during this process, and you've seen me say it before many times, is that I ask that it meets 100-year peak flow and also 100-year volume. And in this case, it meets that. DOT is concerned with volume, but DEM is never concerned with volume. They're concerned with, with peak flow. And so what that really means is that you could have a pond, you know, DEM, if you strictly go by DEMs. And we had this over on the other one on Magnolia as well, but you could have a pond and it could, it could meet the peak flow requirement. So at peak flow, it still is low, but it would meter out water slowly for like a day and a half. And we don't want that. We don't want to force abutters to have to listen to the trickling water and have water flowing through over a period of, a long period of time. In this case, this, this pond meets the requirements of no increase in peak flow or peak volume for 100-year storm. That's what the data shows. So I, you know, I've generally been confident. This is, this is a very difficult site, but before, it is today. And what happens is water falling on this site goes north, I believe, north, and, and then heads all the way over to Oak, goes into a catch basin and then flows all the way back through this site. And because of the way the grades are here, and I, I had thought maybe you could even grade it in the other direction, but I don't really know that you can. And I, I just, I just think that it's a difficult site. I believe that, that the way it's designed here actually improves the conditions because now water falling is actually better than it was in a 100-year storm proposed. So that's all I can really say to it.
Well, if I could just follow up. So, so Rich, I think Josh said that the, the pre-development runoff volume will be less than, or rather, the pre-development volume was more than what there will be post-develop. And you agree with that?
Yes, I do. With the data I've been shown, yes.
And, and there may be storms, obviously a 500-year storm.
Well, right.
They're going to flood.
Designed to 500 years. Those situations that we're building.
There would be flooding there anyway.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Susan?
Hi. I think I would like to ask Rich to clarify some of the, or I make, Josh, I don't know, to clarify some of the mechanics of how the water will flow on the site. I'm especially concerned with the north part of the site, building number one and its area there. And maybe if someone could bring up the plans for that, the very top up at, up the north end. So right now, where building number one is located, it's sort of a bowl. It's down at 36 feet, the same height as the neighbors to the west. And so the proposal is to raise that section of land up to like 39 or 40 feet. And then right behind the house, there's a very steep drop-off down to 36 feet into the neighbor's yard, right where the B is in building number one. To the left of that, there seems to be, it's not going to go to the catch basin. It's not going to go, it's going to go straight down that sheet into the homeowners to the west. And that, I don't know how, I don't, I guess I don't understand the mechanics of how the water from that top part of the site will end up in the catch basin. And I'm also not understanding the outfall from the catch basin that appears to go directly toward the neighbor's property. And especially with adding in so much fill to that part of the site and removing half a dozen mature trees, which are helping right now to manage groundwater and storm flow. So I'm not understanding the mechanics of how the water from that end of the site, off the roofs and off the lawns are going to end up not in the neighbor's yard.
This is Josh. Again, I can answer that to a certain extent. It, it might be more helpful to be looking at the post-development watershed plan, but I can somewhat explain that because I'm not sure that's readily available. One thing is the front of building number one, the existing grade is elevation 38 through the text that says LMI on this plan. So it does slope, but it starts at a front elevation of 38. In the back of that building's 36. There is a little bit of fill there to protect the frost walls on that building. However, the way this system was designed, the entire roof area is included within the infiltration basin design point. So the roof area for building number one, unit 1A and 1B, will be directed over to the infiltration basin. We've additionally, because of the grading for the front of that unit, we've essentially reversed the grade of the front yard, and that's part of our analysis going to Holly Street. So we've reduced in that northern area, to answer your question, Susan, the existing runoff that went from Holly Street east to west across the property and through the abutters into Oak Street. We've sort of intercepted a lot of that land area in post-development conditions, which is leading to the reduction of runoff. So while there is a bit of uncontrolled yard space or grading behind the building number one that will somewhat go and continue uncontrolled, that entire area that has been reduced so that we've redirected, like I said, the building one roof to the infiltration basin and the front yard and the front section of the driveways actually pitched toward Holly Street. So that's, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. So the gutters are, are leading into downspouts that are going into underground piping?
Correct. So when, when we would take the final building units, go for our soil erosion and sediment control plan with the town, we would show the various connections of our downspouts with roof drain, underground roof drain connections that would discharge over to the infiltration area. So if we, if we put the downspouts on the ground, obviously it's going to take the runoff path of the, of the contours, but we, we will, we would plan to pipe those with roof drains and have an inlet over at the infiltration area for the roofs.
Okay. Thank you. On the map, on the map there, it shows the topo line right behind that house at 38 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a two-foot drop-off, a pretty quick drop-off down to the property to the west. And you don't believe that there'll be overland flow coming down that hillside to impact that neighbor?
There will be some overland uncontrolled flow, but it will be vastly reduced even in the condition of that graded scenario versus what that property sees today. Because again, we've intercepted a lot of the water that was in between Holly Street and that location. So we have a little bit left over that will go through that vegetated area along the property limits, but it's, it's vastly reduced from what, what it will see today. Everything else is, everything else is being directed to the basin first and infiltrated. Okay?
So thank you. So I have another question about the basin. So right now, you know, it's February and the ground is frozen and all of this rain we're getting tonight, my backyard looks like a skating rink. If the bottom of this infiltration basin is frozen for a portion of the year and there is no infiltration, how will that, how would a rainstorm like tonight be managed if the basin is frozen?
So if the ground's frozen, this, this area does have obviously some volumetric capacity to hold storage of storm flows. That's part of the analysis. It's a combination of discarded flow through the bottom and storage flow. That's all part of the calculations. So there is a, a freeboard in the basin, which is just extra room to hold volume and the constant usage of the drainage area would promote whatever infiltration we can get, but it has the capacity to provide, in a sense, there's more storage there than discarded flow to begin with. So that's the, the failsafe for the, for the frozen condition.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Sorry. So how high is the water in that basin before it starts going out that little gully into the property to the west? Is that?
So the top, the top of the infiltration basin itself is elevation 35. The bottom is elevation 33.5. So that's a foot and a half and the emergency outlet is 34.75.
Okay. And then the last thing I'll follow up with was I asked you last month about whether or not any of the historic, the old oak trees could be preserved. Is that something that we could have a conversation? Is that something that could be talked about?
Yeah. So what we thought to do after looking at the, you know, revisiting the survey stakes and Scott Hallberg, if you have anything to add, but also feel free. But we had thought that when we designed building number one for the soil erosion plan in the final driveway location, that we could basically mark some of the trees that are outside the limits of the driveway and that would be unaffected by the change in grade, which there's a section to the northwest of the driveway that we could isolate, we believe, two, possibly three of those oak trees. And we would be able to basically protect and preserve those with special details that our landscape architect would develop. And we would institute that as part of our site plan for building one when it goes back to public services and the building department, to the extent possible. But we would pay attention to that location and try to, we believe, like I said, we could keep two, possibly three of those trees. But we would, you know, Mr. Hallberg, I think, has agreed to make the effort to do that when we finalize that particular plan. There, there, there may be, or there are a couple of other trees in that section of the building that would need to be removed just for the construction of the building. But there's a particular area, like I said, to the north northwest of that driveway that we think that we could preserve a couple of those trees.
That's super.
We're willing to do that.
Thank you very much for considering that.
You're welcome.
And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Susan. And, and Josh, as a follow-up, I'm assuming that the applicant would be willing to have language in any approval relative to specific measures related to preventing saw compaction and preserving the integrity of the trees during construction.
Yes, he and I talked about that and he would, but Scott, if you want to just confirm that, please, for the record?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, I want to save every tree I can.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions from board members? Before we move on to the public, are there any additional thoughts from members of the planning department? Jamie, was that a hand raised or?
Madam Chair, just on the mature trees, I just wanted to throw this out. I know it's the intent of the planning board as well as Mr. Hallberg, as he stated tonight, to save those. Again, there is a methodology to doing that and protecting the drip zone and root area based on the classification of the tree during construction. But also I would like to offer the planning board, following that, perhaps, I know when I was out there, depending on which oak you were looking at, the actual state and health of those mature trees could be suspect. I know a number of them were damaged in the last five to six years on gypsy moss. And it may be prudent to have, or give Mr. Hallberg the option to have a arborist look at them. Again, if they are damaged, not healthy, and that they potentially could be removed, Mr. Hallberg would replace them with another specimen-type tree so that it's not just a pure removal of it, but it's the, the evaluation of the health and longevity. You know, it doesn't work well if Mr. Hallberg saves it and five years later, due to a health issue or these problem, that tree isn't there versus making the decision on the health of the tree now, potentially removing it and replacing it with a specimen-type tree in a similar location to serve a similar purpose over time.
Thanks, Jamie. That's an excellent idea. Mr. Hallberg, do you agree with that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's reasonable.
Thank you. Anything else from staff? This is a, oh, go ahead, Jamie. This is a, oh, go ahead, Jamie.
Just not at the moment, Madam Chair.
Okay, thanks. This is a public hearing. I see Ed Kimerline has his hand raised. Jamie, if you could bring him in?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Kimerline.
Again, it's kind of like I'm bringing up the same concerns that I had last time because nothing has changed on the plans. I still see an overflow that is at thirty four feet. And, I mean, I know from past storms that I've had water that runs all the way up to the thirty six-foot mark that runs all the way into my property, into Gene's property next door. And I know he's trying to say that he is going to have half of the property flow in the other direction towards Holly Street. But there's still is a major concern about that drop off, which Sue pointed out. I appreciate Sue bringing up the concerns I had, especially with that building number one being at thirty eight feet plus, very close to my property, then dropping down significantly. The water will collect there. And the fact that you have the, all of the roofs having their drainage spouts going into the catch basin, that doesn't help me at all because that just means there's going to be more water in that catch basin to come up to that overflow and dump into my property. So, and another issue that still has not been addressed is that the trees that supposedly were there in the original plan are not there between my property and this property. They were drawn in on the original plan, the landscaping. And the only landscaping there is my arborvitae's. And that, it just seems to be kind of something that got eliminated because you wanted to put the overflow in there. It is still going to drain into my property. I mean, Josh just said that just now. There will be residual runoff into and through the trees into the adjoining properties. I guess in the end, if this is the way it's going to be and you are not going to make any changes and you're going to continue to have this overflow basin draining directly onto my property, I would like to know, basically, who do I hold accountable? Where is the liability lie? Is it with the person who built it? Is it with the HOA? Where does the liability lie when water from this property does flow into my property? And I'm looking for some answers. And my property values increase because anyone that would look, if I were to sell my property and they went and looked in the back, they'd say, hey, you have a drainage basin aiming directly at your property. So that's where I stand. I'd like to know where does that liability lie? So that when, when, not when and if, but when that overflows into my property, I would like to know who I can hold accountable for that.
Thank you, Mr. Kimerline. I think we will probably want to hear from a few different sources for answers to your questions. Probably Josh would be the first one.
Sure, I could just speak to the operation and maintenance end of our stormwater design in the sense that with the prescribed methods for maintaining best management practice like this infiltration basin, in this scenario, there would be a condominium association that would be obviously constructed of the building unit owners that would then be responsible for maintenance of that facility. And given the fact that, you know, this area is going to be developed as, you know, a condo-style residential development, I feel as if it should be pretty clear that the unit owners in this residences on Holly are going to be just as in tune to maintaining this stormwater facility as would the neighbors abutting to the west because of the proximity to their units themselves and their other infrastructure on their particular site. So I would, I feel like this is certainly in the best interest of all parties to have that type of maintenance performed. But once the developer does construct these facilities and is approved by the town, confirming that it was installed as it was designed on these plans, then that responsibility turns over to the, to the association to answer that part of the question. I guess I'll stop there and see Ms. Mack, if you had somebody else that you wanted to hear from.
Yes, thank you, Josh. And the other, there are a couple of other questions. One is relative to the trees. I don't know if that's something that Josh, you or Scott can answer. The question about the trees that were on one drawing but are not on the current set of plans.
Well, there's, there is a row of, and Scott, you can, because Scott also walked the property when additional stakes were provided on that, on that western line. There's a row of arborvitae's that is basically coinciding with the westerly property boundary. There's some other vegetation, brush vegetation to the east, which is shown on our plan, that tree line. So we feel like that generally represents what's going on at that particular line. Again, I just encourage the butters, all the butters, to realize that because of what was required of the applicant to meet its own, his own drainage design here and stormwater requirements, the benefit is truly to the downgradient properties in this scenario. Because, again, we've intercepted water that could be contributing to some of the issues that these folks are seeing. And I think they have to give it a chance to sort of work its way out in a positive way. I think it's going to benefit the neighborhood to some degree. And in theory, just give a little bit less impact to the property owners between Oak Street and this property. Again, this is not the only area, this parcel of land that drains toward Oak Street via the northern section of the property. This is not the only contributing land area to a stormwater runoff that these folks see. So we did the best we can. And I truly think it's, it's going to represent an improvement to some of these folks where it may not make the entire problem or whatever's going on downgradient go away. But certainly, obviously, it's not going to increase that. But I have a feeling they're going to see, to some degree, a benefit after this project's constructed. That's, that's my professional feeling.
Thank you, Josh. Amy, do you think, do you feel comfortable addressing the question about accountability and liability, whether it's the applicant or if it's the homeowners association? Is that something you can?
Yeah, this is Amy Goins, legal counsel for the town. Any attorney that, that a private homeowner would hire to file suit over a situation like this would likely sue several different parties, potentially including the town, including the original developer, including the homeowners association, individual landowners. So the answer is, it depends. Potentially, several, several parties could be liable. I don't think I can really say anything more specific than that. But certainly, anyone is free to pursue whatever civil legal claims they feel might be justified.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, it looks like Raymond and Barbara Lima have hand raised.
Hi, Barbara Lima, seventy Oak Street in Nowickfield. And I just wanted to make a comment about the basin and the runoff that our neighbors across the street are experiencing. Behind us on the northern part of Magnolia Lane, the developer actually gave up a lot to turn it into a water basin. And we know there's an issue because they're attempting to put a lot of houses, a lot of buildings, excuse me, on this property. And I think if they would be willing to give up one of those buildings and put in a better basin infiltration system, that it would be much to the betterment of many things, including the water, stormwater runoff. Because there are a lot of trees, we walked that property yesterday, and there are a lot of trees there. And as you know, the water, the tree's roots system take up a lot of water. So we're removing a lot of the trees and we have the runoff going on. And, you know, I'm not saying a lot's gone well with Magnolia Lane, but that is one thing that they did do is give up for the water basin. And so I'd suggest that you consider that because, in my opinion, there are too many buildings proposed for that site anyway. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Kimerline, his hand raised once again.
Mr. Kimerline? You just need to unmute yourself. There you go.
All right. Oh, you're not allowing my video, I guess. Okay, so a couple of things. Josh said that the homeowners of the new properties would be just as concerned about the water runoff and the concerns of the water as I would. That's not exactly a hundred percent true because they're sitting on high land. Their property will be at thirty feet mark. Everything from their property will drain back towards into that runoff basin. Yes, there will be some that runs towards Holly Street, but that basin is there for a reason to catch water. So their, their concerns are not equal to mine. They do not have a catch basin that has drainage aiming directly at my property. In the last meeting, the engineer, Josh, drew a line. There's public record of this. And he showed that the drainage from that basin will run into my property. That is public record. I plan to make sure that that is something that I make note of. Because you are directly saying that this property will drain into my property. And it seems as though it is the planning board's efforts. There, it should be your desire to not allow more runoff into the existing properties than already exist. And it seems as though that is not the play. And to say that the trees that were there, that were in the plan, are no longer there because of the drainage and you're depending on the arborvitae's, well, those are provides are mine. So it seems interesting that you're, you are now depending on the landscape buffer to be my property, my trees, not something that you are putting in. And I'd have to say that, you know, as far as the liability is concerned, we will consult with a lawyer with experience in this area. And instead of taking the developer's word for it regarding our property value, there's no objective expert weighing in here. It's just the person who is trying to develop the land and myself. And it seems as though my voice is, gets cut off pretty quickly. But again, nothing has changed in this plan. You are developing a plan that is going to drain water directly onto my property and Gene Bowen's property. And that just seems absolutely unbelievable that you are going to be allowing that kind of liability to be out there for the town, the developer, the homeowners and everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Kimerline. I do want to say that I don't believe you have been cut off in any manner. And certainly, based on the concerns and the questions that have been raised by planning board members, we do share concerns relative to stormwater. We do ask as many questions as possible. We understand that there are historical drainage patterns that we do not control. And we also understand that there, the applicant is bound by DEM regulations to not have any net increase in runoff. And I think that you'll find that our questions to the applicant, to our town engineer, have been very clear as far as concerns.
Okay, am I still, can you still hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm sorry. The last time it got cut off. So I totally appreciate your questions. I thought Susan's questions, I felt like she was sitting next to me, expressing my exact concerns. And I truly appreciate that. What I'm concerned with is that the plans that are there now still show that drainage problem and the drainage towards my property. If, right, if, that just seems, okay, if DEM is approving that and everything else, it's still a problem. And from this meeting tonight, are those plans going to be the plans that go forward?
Thank you. Rich, perhaps you could answer the additional concerns that Mr. Kimerline has brought up relative to the stage of the plans and any revisions related to those? And anything else you think is relevant on this matter?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to point out that the existing site, as it is today, points to that direction, the same direction as what's being proposed. And from my look at this, and again, from all the information I've been given, that the drainage patterns that exist today are being maintained, although they're being reduced because the pond is able to hold water. And, you know, the way this is designed presently is that a twenty-five-year storm, which we had this September, would discharge no water, you know, from that pond. So that, that area now is taken out of the equation for, for this area. Much of the water, you know, just from my limited experience, I've only been here for a few years. But, you know, the water that's, that's coming through this particular area, a lot of it's overland and some of it even tops from Oak Street. But that water comes from all the way by the fields at the high school. And it gets out onto school and then goes, catch basins is a thirty-six-inch line that runs down through these properties, but an eighteen-inch line all the way from School Street down Oak. You know, there's a lot of water booming through that area. And it's all, this, this plan doesn't change any of that. That's all still happening. It has been happening. We've got, you know, documentation showing that it's happening. If you were to, you know, just take this whole property and turn it into a basin, that would still be happening. Those problems are still going to happen. They've been happening forever. I, sometimes it gets difficult because we want to be able to resolve all these problems or some of these problems. And we do very often. And, and I know that, that Barbara Lima and Wyatt have talked about their property over by Magnolia. You know, but there was a situation where we could actually introduce a basin that, that would accommodate. But, you know, that was the same. In that situation, we didn't want to see an increase in volume going over to a butters. And without that basin, they couldn't do it. So that was why that happened. In this case, we requested the same thing we did over there. And, and they're able to show, you know, from the calculations that it meets our requirements. It's unfortunate. It's a difficult, it's a difficult area. You know, it's a very difficult spot.
Understood. Thank you. We have another hand raised. Gene Bowen?
Yes, good evening. I don't want to remain silent and have you think that I'm in agreement or disagreement with what we're discussing tonight. I thank my neighbor, Mr. Kimerline, for his comments. And you have seen, I think, some pictures of my property, especially my shed, which has been swimming in the water from the storm last September. I remain concerned about what you have now called the pond behind my home. And I, I think, as I look at the project in the bigger picture of it, with no disrespect, Mr. Hallberg and Mr. Rose- I, with no disrespect, Mr. Hallberg and Mr. Rosen, it seems to me that it's your design that is the problem here, that if you had designed buildings to sit on this property in a more equitable way and still make, still make your living, still develop this property. It seems to me that the design could be improved so that there wouldn't be this challenge and it wouldn't be so crowded and push the water. I have, as I mentioned last month, a strand of Arborvitae also that borders my property. And I remain concerned that the roots of that, of those plantings might be disturbed in the building. So I am happy to hear that there's some accommodation made for the trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria, this is Josh. If I, just a quick response. Mr. Bourbonay's analysis is so spot on. It's very important that I think we all understand what he said in, to the fact of the larger watershed area into Oak Street and some of the other things that are going on within these properties. I couldn't agree more with how he presented that. And, you know, just as a follow-up, we have approximately 30,000 square feet of area, so less than an acre, that we are managing through this infiltration basin. It's, it's the land area between Holly Street and the Western property that we're required to manage. That's, in a sense, the land area that drains in and through our property that we are managing. In other words, we don't have more area to, to bring into this infiltration basin to help the situation. We, we've done everything through the 100-year storm that we possibly can. It's, it's not like there's eight acres of runoff contributing through our property that we could, like, to one of the Butters' points, take a unit or two away and use for drainage. We don't have, we, we make a drainage area bigger. It, it serves no purpose because we, we truly don't have, we have a drop in the bucket as far as contributing area to the overall watershed. So I just wanted to reinforce that. I think Rich explained it very well.
Thank you, Josh. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I don't see any hands raised at this point.
Madam Chair, we do have Mr. Jordan as a question, I believe.
Really just a comment. I just wanted to assure Mr. Kimmel that we, the drainage issue comes up, I think, on every project that we've looked at since I've been on the planning board. I have a home here on High Street that before the road was reconstructed, I would get massive flooding through my yard into my neighbor's yard. I know how frustrating that is. I think as a planning board member, you know, I have to rely on, on Josh Rosen. He's a professional engineer. His license depends on him doing good work. Rich has reviewed that work. And if they tell me that the runoff from the site will be the reduced post-development, I have to take the word for it. I hope that it's true. And I also wondered early on, Mr. Kimmel, I asked you, what, what is the remedy? And I think you got your answer to that question. I, I think at this point, we have to accept it for what it is. I'm, I'm willing to believe that there will be less runoff post-development.
Thanks, Paul. I, I agree. We do need to rely on the multiple perspectives that we have been given and certainly our town staff has gone over this. And they have dealt with drainage issues on almost every project that has come before us.
Thank you. I don't mean any disrespect to Josh or to Rich because I know they're both excellent at the things they do. But I'm feeling a little uneasy. And I think that if my name were thrown out there as a potential, you know, person to go after if Mr. Kimmel's yard is under a foot of water all the time, is it reasonable to just inquire how we feel about a third-party peer review just to make sure, sure that this is going to be okay for the neighbors?
Jamie, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. Again, it's contained within your regulations, your ability to require peer review or acquiesce to peer review. You do have a very competent town engineer who has both worked in the public and private sector. He has not only just reviewed drainage projects, he has actually designed drainage projects. I think to Mr. Bourbonay's point and Mr. Rosen's point, this is a plus or minus acre site that is a small portion of the watershed that drains to this area. And that their calculations, as reviewed by the town engineer, solidify and by example, show based on the calculations that they are managing their stormwater runoff from this site. They are reducing the, and Mr. Rosen or Rich, please correct me, the peak, both volume and flow from the site by doing retention and infiltration to the northwestern property owners. So it should potentially improve the situation if constructed properly. With regards to future liability, there are many factors that could result in downstream flooding that are beyond the development of this site. Again, this is one component of a much larger watershed. I think some of the members testified tonight with their reliance on town staff. Again, I have confidence in Mr. Bourbonay, so as our town engineer. And if he was testifying that he had concerns, he wasn't sure that there could or maybe could be an issue long-term. Maybe peer review would be germane to the subject here tonight, but I haven't heard those words from Mr. Bourbonay's. I heard, you know, kind of contrary items associated with that, that he was comfortable with, reviewed the calculations, understood the watershed and determined that his review of their calculations came to a similar conclusion that there would be a reduction flow, both peak, peak and flow. Uh, sorry, peak, flow and volume. Again, Rich is on one of the panels and add more.
Yeah, let me just add a little bit to that. The, uh, generally I get concerned if you have, you know, three different ponds or four different types of infiltration or multiple watersheds. Because we really only have two watersheds here, one that goes out to Holly and I'm comfortable with that. And then one that goes out to the back. It's, it's, it's a pretty straightforward look. And from what's being designed, they're, they're, they're showing that accommodated, you know, the, the increases are accommodated. I don't know what, what a, you know, it's not my decision, but I'm not sure what, what more peer review is going to be able to say. But again, it's not my decision.
Thank you, Rich. Other thoughts from board members? Yes.
Josh, so I, I shared, you know, Paul's sentiment that, and I appreciate the, the work that Josh Rosen and others did to bring this back with the, the questions that we raised last time about the different surfaces and looking at it from an obvious perspective. I agree. I, I look at this from a layman's perspective, but I do trust the judgment of our, our town staff. I think what I'm hearing, and again, I'm going to check that I'm hearing this correctly because I am very much a layman on, on this topic. What I'm hearing is that it's, it's overall that this, this project is, as it's projected, is going to improve the peak flow and volume of water, but that the larger issue is, is beyond the scope of, of this particular project and the size of, of the potential, you know, land area, catchment area for, for the water that drains into this area. So, so I guess my question is, if I, first, if I'm hearing that right. And then second, if there's anything that the town might think about or do or look at, you know, to address the larger issue here. So those are my two questions.
Thanks, Josh. Those are, those are excellent questions. Rich, do you have any thoughts on the larger watershed issue?
No, we've looked at this area a number of different ways. You know, much of that, that pipe that runs through the back of this property discharges to private property. We have other restrictions. You know, we can't, we can't change the historic flow to those properties. Just like we request of applicants, we adhere to that same principle. We don't want to change historic flows. If, if we've got a pipe going to that property and it's, you know, we can't make it bigger. You know, but we also are restricted by other regulatory agencies like DEM, CRMC, you know, the EPA. So it's not even like we can discharge the water right into Indian, Indian Run. And, you know, it would be nice, we have issues, we have some really tough spots. Quagmire, I don't know if you've ever been down Quagmire. You know, that is a, a real sore for us. We, we just can't figure out what to do, but we don't really have the ability to do anything over there. And it's, that's another one that's, that's tough. It's a low spot. Houses built up high all around it. Nobody's going to give us property to put a detention pond. Why would you in that area? And, and we can't send a pipe through and discharge it out to the, you know, out, out to the, uh, the bay. So, or to the, the pond. So, you know, this is another one of those spots. It's not, we don't really have a lot of options. So we do plan to go through this, this conveyance system and, and maybe camera it. And if there's any maintenance we can do on it, if there's a reason why it's not, it's backing up. But I can't say for sure that's really happening at this point.
Oh, thanks, Rich. And at what point might that happen? You said you might camera it. And is there a certain time period that you would associate with, with this monitoring? Go ahead.
Well, there's a gal, there's a gal that lives on the other side of, of Oak. And she's got a low spot there. And this backs up into her property and it's real tough on her building. So that was kind of the precipice for us talking about it. That was in the fall. But, you know, since then, we've had some significant weather. Our highway department's really overwhelmed. So if anything happens, it'll probably be through the spring.
Thanks, Rich. Any other comments?
We do have the ability. We have a camera. We can run cameras down there. And it's a big enough line. We can flush it if we have to. We, we have those, we have ways to get that done as well. We'll, we'll do, we'll take a look at.
Thank you, Rich. Other comments from board members? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I see Mr. Kimmel has his hand up again, but just wondering if someone who has not yet spoken would like to speak. If not, Mr. Kimmel, please be aware of the fact that we do have other public hearings this evening and we have other items to get to. So if you have any new questions that you would like to ask or new information that you have not yet given us this evening, that would probably be appropriate.
Yeah, I will keep my comments brief. I know I've, I've been on this meeting a lot, but there is a major concern for me. And I, I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak my mind. One quick question about the, the retention pond that will drain directly towards my property. If I'm not mistaken, they were saying that the bait, the bottom of that pond is at, what is it? The, the height was only like at 53 feet. And the, oh, the automatic runoff, the bird's runoff was at 54. So that retention pond will only hold a little over a foot of water before it starts draining into my property. Is that, is that correct? I don't think I'm using the wrong numbers. I said 54. I meant 34.
Josh, would you like to answer that? I believe it was at least 18 inches was the reference, but please make any corrections.
So, I guess Josh can't give me an answer here, but I'm sorry, I don't want to delay it any longer. But it seems as though you're talking about a foot to a foot and a half of water before it runs into my property in the direction that he indicated that it would. Secondly, the, the storm drain on Oak Street that runs directly under my property over to Holly Street. I know Rich said something about it draining into private property. If, it's my understanding that that drainage from, that runs from Oak Street turns the corner on Holly Street and eventually empties into Indian Run directly. I, I know, I've known that over the years. So I don't, I don't think we're looking at it running down towards the other, the, the southern end of the property into that retention pond. We're looking at the, the drainage that runs under my street runs directly into Indian Run.
Thank you. I think that Rich can probably answer those questions.
Maria, if you'd like me to answer, this is Josh.
Yes, you're back. Thank you.
I, I accidentally got disconnected, but I heard the, the question. And I'm confirming that the amount of, of volume within that infiltration area is approximately the difference between 34.75 in elevation to 33.5 at the bottom. The, the overflow operates at 34.75. The bottom of the basin is 33.5. So that's 15 inches. And again, that design within that 15-inch range is for storms through the 100 years. So theoretically, the emergency overflow at 34.75 that would direct water toward the natural historic drainage pattern wouldn't in, in effect be exercised unless it was greater than the 100-year storm event. So that's the answer to that part of that question. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you, Josh. And Rich, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I don't. Yeah, we've got a, a little bit discrepancy in our data. I, I've always been under the assumption that a lot of this volume does go to a property just south of this, this property. Yeah, but it may in fact actually go out to Indian Run. But either way, again, we can't change those patterns. You know, I just want to be real clear about that is we can't change the drainage.
Thanks, Rich. We have another hand up. Mr. Vasquez.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Thank you. I just was hoping that you could educate me on where we are with this development, what happens afterwards. And if there is going to be continued opportunity for neighbors to talk about this development in the future. So I'm ignorant as far as how this all works out. I know that, you know, Mr. Hallberg presented a plan and then it gets looked at and you have the technical review committee and then it goes to you guys. So if somebody could just take a couple of minutes and explain what would happen next, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. We are at the preliminary stage of review, which is actually a misnomer because it sounds as though it's the initial stage. But it's actually, for all practical purposes, the final stage. The first stage is conceptual master plan, which The first stage is conceptual master plan, um, which they have already received approval for. Um, that includes a public hearing, the preliminary stage, which we are now at, also includes a public hearing. Um, after that, um, it is largely administrative in nature. There are no public hearings associated with final, the final stage of review. Um, Jamie, where are we at with regard to timeframe for this?
Madam Chair, Jay has that run and tally on timeframe associated with this development. But again, I want to say we're, we're near the end on the timeframe.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the deadline is March 17th. That would be the 90th from the date of completion.
Knowing that timeframe, Madam Chair, I, I know it's of the norm. If the public hearing is closed, is for the planning board to refer the matter to staff to develop a motion. You would give us action on the manner of that motion. And that would in essence, uh, require the applicant to consent an extension to your March 22nd meeting, which I, um, I'm under the assumption that Mr. Hallbrook would not object to that, um, extension to your next regularly scheduled meeting in March. So that staff could formulate a motion if that is your intent.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Hallberg, do you agree if that is the case?
Uh, the, yeah, what, uh, when could we close the public hearing?
That, that will probably be determined this evening whether or not that happens. And as Jamie said, in the event that it is closed, then the planning board would direct staff to take whatever action they feel is appropriate. Um, and that would require a continuation to the following, um, meeting, which would be the 22nd as opposed to the 17th, because we're on about five days short.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm okay with that. I think, you know, we're hearing the same comments again and again. I think, you know, it might be time to close the public and I, and I would certainly, uh, be comfortable with the, uh, extension to get to the March 22nd date.
Uh, thank you. Um, at this point, I don't see any other hands in the audience. Um, thoughts from planning board members as far as closing the public hearing and then any considerations that they feel are, uh, appropriate at this point in time relative to any draft motion? Paul?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion from Paul. Do we have a second from Peter? Thank you. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hands, please.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, considerations for, um, a motion. We have discussed a few additional items this evening. Um, certainly relative to the existing trees, having an arborist look at the trees as far as health. If that is deemed to be acceptable, um, by the arborist, then tree protection measures would need to be put in place. We have done this in other subdivisions, um, with regard to soil compaction, drip line, all of the things that Jamie made reference to, those are, are normal. Yes, Paul, go ahead.
I, I think Jamie had some additional language there that if any of those trees do need to be removed on the advice of the arborist. I think the language was replaced with a suitable specimen tree, something to that effect.
Correct. Yes, that would also be. Um, so that's something that has come up that's new this evening. Other thoughts? Um, I have a question. Oh, Susan, go ahead.
Um, so I believe it was one of the callers that mentioned the, um, protection of the arborvitae. Do we need to specify that measures need to be taken to protect the arborvitae from compaction or damage? And potentially if they were damaged, that they be replaced or something?
Um, that's a good question, Susan. Often you will see in a site plan, the limit of disturbance and there are specific instructions, um, relative to, uh, construction. Um, and being more specific regarding protection of any existing trees is a good idea. Um, could you, perhaps Josh, you have a drawing that shows the limit of disturbance? And could we see where that is relative to the line of arborvitae?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, I think we can simple, in an attempt to simplify the discussion, we've used language in similar motions that, uh, during construction, uh, the, any trenching in that area has to be evaluated. And if there is a root zone that appears during that trenching or excavation activity that the appropriate professionals do root pruning and, uh, in an effort to increase the survivability or harm or shock, uh, to the vegetation in proximity with that trench versus just letting the bucket of the excavator be the pruning device. And again, uh, Mr. Rosen has shown limits of clearing. But again, not every piece vegetation in that area is shown. But we could defer to a standard, uh, condition of approval where those trenches are, uh, supervised in the field by the appropriate professionals. And then the appropriate corrective measures such as hand root pruning are undertaken in that root zone to any affected vegetation.
Um, thank you, um, Jamie, that, that is correct. And I think that since the, uh, drip line is not going to be as significant on arborvitae as it would be on a typical deciduous tree, um, care must be taken and measures must be, um, put into any motion to be sure that there is no, um, destruction or compaction. Because often when that's the case, you'll have a, uh, tree die a slow lingering death that isn't necessarily obvious in the first six months. So again, having those tree protection measures in place, putting those, um, as a requirement in, in the conditions is important. Anything else that board members would like to see specifically, um, put into a motion?
Oh, Madam Chair, can I, uh, interrupt? I apologize. It's Josh Rosen. All right, I, I'm just taking notes here. Again, obviously Mr. Kenny is not here tonight, but I'm trying to make sure we cover everything. But is the draft motion from the previous staff report, is this the framework of what you're adding to right now? Or are you, you guys coming up with something? I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear on my notes. In other words, uh, previous report, we saw a draft motion for consideration and it had some conditions. Uh, these are just ones that you're going to add to that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any additional thoughts from board members relative to our conversation tonight? A question for Amy and Rich. Rich had offered to do some monitoring, uh, relative to a camera. Is that something that could, should be put in a motion or not? So that we ensure that that actually happens, um, in the future?
Um, Madam Chair, that is, uh, I think falls under public service on the maintenance, uh, of their drainage system. It is not something in my view that should be included in a motion because it is not in the control of the developer or the applicant.
Um, yes, I agree. And I, if Rich could just clarify, Rich, is this something you're, um, offering to do over and above what DPS usually does? Or is this standard operating procedure?
Uh, a little of both. Uh, we, you know, we do have MS4 requirements. So we, we do, um, keep track of our drainage systems and we do try to clean our systems. This particular, uh, section has not been looked at in depth. We know we have issues. It has nothing to do with this property, but it has to do really on the water, the oak side. So we will be taking care of it.
Rich, could you just speak up a little?
I, we, we're going to take care of it, um, in the spring. That's all I have to say about it. I mean, I can't, uh, it is not necessarily part of our regular operating procedures, but we do maintain our, our drainage systems. And, uh, in this case, in as necessary situation, but we'll get out there.
Yeah, Maria, I think, um, any direction or requested direction to DPS could be, um, framed as a request, right?
Okay. Thank you, Amy. That's helpful. Um, and, and it's certainly appreciated that, um, it is going, um, beyond the standard operating procedures. So thank you for that, Rich. Um, other thoughts with regard to a motion? Susan?
So I was under the impression earlier during this project that these were, um, 12 condominium units for sale. And I think I just read somewhere that the affordable units would not be for sale. Are we, are we clear on whether these will be sold or rented? And was I alone under the impression they would all be for sale? Or are they for rent? Or can I just get clarification on that? And I don't know whether that needs to be included in a motion or not.
Mr. Hallberg, perhaps you can enlighten us here? Oh, you're still muted.
Okay, I lost connection. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question. Okay.
Susan is asking if the affordable units would be rentals or they would be for sale?
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know what to, I don't know what I'm going to do with them. My intent right now is to keep all of them.
Madam Chair, we can work with legal counsel with regards to the affordability aspect. Uh, my understanding of Rhode Island's law is the applicant needs to make sure they meet the affordability, uh, requirements regardless of whether they're for sale or for rent. They need to meet medium income. So again, we will, I'll work with legal on the formation of that motion. But, uh, actual Roger's point, there is a component that needs to remain affordable. They will be deed restricted affordable regardless of sale or rental. We'll make sure we have that appropriate language.
Thank you, Jamie. Anything else from board members? Um, so would someone like to make a motion that we are directing staff to provide a motion for approval at our January, uh, January, March 22nd meeting? Um, along with the conditions discussed this evening?
I'll make that motion for our staff to prepare our favorable, uh, motion based on the, um, draft that they provided us tonight along with the additional discussion this evening.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Josh? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is a public hearing development plan review advisory to zoning board, plant-based compassionate care, Inc.
Madam Chair, I know you normally take a break at nine o'clock. Um, but you're at, we'll say 8:30 right now. You're entering into a, a full another hearing. And I'm just questioning, would you like to take that five minute break now before you get into a half an hour with the next application? And then mention that you normally take a break at nine?
Board members, is everyone fine with that? All right, we shall return after a five minute break. I think we have a majority of everyone back good. And we will continue on to our next item. Public hearing development plan review advisory to zoning board plant-based compassionate care, Inc. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Attorney Stephen Surtit. A spot starting this evening for attorney James Callahan. But I believe you had the pleasure of speaking with you at the last meeting.
Good evening. Please continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As you said, we are here tonight regarding a request from Plant-Based Compassionate Care, Inc. I believe the board was briefly introduced to the project at your last meeting. We have a number of experts here tonight again. We've submitted, as I know Mr. Callahan pointed out, a very comprehensive and detailed package. I believe the applicant and I have also spoken directly with your planning staff during the course of the last month and are looking forward to coming back before the board and addressing questions and concerns the board have. I do just briefly want to recap that we are here asking only for two very small waivers from your statutory requirements. And we believe that we will meet all the dimensional requirements when we get to zoning. We are asking simply for a reduction in the required loading space with regards to requirements and dimensions. You will see, as I'm sure you have in our plan set, that we do not need to utilize large loading vessels. We can are large loading vehicles. We can do this with much smaller, less impactful, more environmentally friendly vehicles. Additionally, we are asking for a slight modification or waiver from your Wednesday development reg regulations simply to allow us to utilize a small portion of one of the boundaries as an egress, ingress, and as well as for the appropriate visual sightlines to allow people to safely come and go from the facility. Other than that, we do believe we meet all the requirements. I know there is there was some concern about traffic. I believe that my colleague Blake will be able to address those matters specifically. Unfortunately, Mr. Pimentel, our planner, is not here, so I will do my best to address any questions that come into that arena based on his testimony and the documentation he submitted to this fine board. With that being said, I believe Mr. Costa was sworn in at the last meeting, but I defer to the board if you'd like to swear him in again.
We're we're not a quasi judicial board as in a zoning board, so we don't swear anyone in. So, Mr. Costa, may proceed.
Sure person, Matt. Thank you. And we appreciate the board giving us the opportunity to present last month at such a late hour. As everyone's aware, my name's Blake Costa and the Vice President of Operations for Plant-Based Compassionate Care. We have been awarded a Licensed Operator Medical Cannabis Compassion Center. The proposal here is to cite the location at 71 Old Tower Hill Road. I have been the point person for this application process, assembling the team and working with the planning office and the community to make this possible. Our facility is designed for patients with medical needs for such as pain, cancer, who need met alternative medicine in order to address those ailments. We are not a recreational head shop that serves the general public. Individuals that will be contact our location would be those who go to a qualified doctor to receive a recommendation, proceed to the state capital for receiving to apply for a medical cannabis patient card with the Department of Health. They're not out driving around looking for a compassion center. They're doing their due diligence. They're finding out where their medicine is and they're finding a location to go get it. This can be a similar experience that one may have when you're going to pick up medicine from your local pharmacy. You're not there to hang around and shop. You kind of want to get in and get out, get your medicine and go. That's our type of operation. We're providing help to people in pain. That's the end state. We are nonprofit. We are not a for-profit. We have experience in this space, so about four and a half years, I began with my partners opening a medical cultivation facility in Warwick, Rhode Island. One of the first on the can't medical cannabis expansion plan. We have operated on a sustainable, environmentally friendly facility that allows us to offer medicine to patients at low cost. We plan on doing that here at this compassion center. My background is in security and safety. Not only do I serve as the Vice President of Operations, I maintain a position as a Director of Security Safety, coming from military and federal security background, working at embassies and with the White House abroad. Additionally, community relations is a big part of this company. We have done multiple community outreach projects throughout the state and the region. We will continue to maintain our community relations policy such as our good neighbor policy, where we have a dedicated community liaison. Our good neighbor policy is intended to interact and be proactive with community relations from town officials, the chief of police, or our local neighbors. We have reported methods in place that we communicate to our neighbors in the event there's any odor complaints, traffic complaints, or loitering complaints. We take those seriously and address them as quick as possible. As I said, our patients are qualified patients. They come in here looking for their medicine, not looking to shop around for their next flavored beer. They're kind of coming. They'll be screened at the door by receptionists to verify that they have proper government ID and that they have a medical marijuana card. Then they'd proceed and they'd meet with the patient counselor who identify what their needs are and what type of medicine suits them best. From there, they'd put together an order. No cannabis product would be kept on the retail floor. It'd all be secured in a secure inventory prep room. While the patient is consulting with their patient counselor, their order is being prepped. Their order would be brought out from the secured room where the transaction would be completed. The patient review the medicine, review special instructions, and proceed on their way. From other retail operations we have operated, we're able to do this in under five minutes. From the time the patient comes in the door to the time the patient leaves. In addition to our efficient operations, we will also be running a comprehensive delivery system. This delivery system will incentivize patients to place orders online or over the phone, at which a delivery person would bring them to their residence. In addition, we'd be promoting and incentivizing patients to use online ordering. That's a preorder system where you can show up, your order's ready, submit payment, you leave. This would dramatically decrease the amount of traffic we would expect to see at this location. With that said, understanding traffic's been a big topic of conversation for this project. I apologize for late submission, but after meeting with members of the planning department, we have addressed some additional traffic concerns and submitted a memo today. Not sure if the board has been able to do this, review it. I apologize. But the changes we propose to the traffic plan would be one, to our site plan, exiting our property onto Persian Ave. We propose a right turn only sign with painted stripes. We revise our plans for those painted stripes to be a mountable curb. This way to persuade traffic to go right in order to mitigate any flow of traffic into the residential areas southbound on Persian. In addition to that, in accordance with local town code, we would request that the board can incorporate a special condition, which would be in the best interest of the board and the town. Whereas if there was a increase of traffic going northbound on Persian to Old Tower Hill Road that had an impact on neighboring businesses, that based on that review, after 120 days, Plant-Based Compassionate Care, we would go ahead and modify the Persian and Old Tower Hill Road intersection as shown in the intersection sketch to incorporate a left-hand turn and right-hand turn only way. Therefore, reducing the queue going up Persian and mitigating any further impact on neighboring businesses. Now, we ask that this be a condition that would be reviewed after 120 days to see if the traffic impact is significant enough to warrant it. Pending any questions for myself, I'd like to bring in John Chevlin. He's already been promoted and he can speak as our traffic engineer. Are there any questions for myself before we move on to John from the board?
Only that you are correct that assuming that planning board members may have digested any memos that may have come today is not necessarily the case. And it would be most efficient if we can continue on with specific topics and then allow planning board members to ask questions or make comments specific to those topics, such as site plan and operation, parking and traffic and circulation and landscaping. Not necessarily in that order.
With that being said, Ms. Chairman, if we could allow Mr. Chevlin to address some of these proposed changes and as well as what he would suggest with regards to the traffic study once the completion in line with what Mr. Costa just said.
Yes, certainly.
Evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I apologize. For some reason, my my camera's not coming up right now. So I apologize for I'm not sure why it's not working tonight. But for the record, my name is John Chevlin. I work for Park Corporation. I've been working at Par for 34 years. Graduated from University of Amherst with an engineering civil engineering degree. I have 34 years' experience in regards to doing transportation-related work and a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island. We have been asked to go ahead and do the traffic impact analysis for this project. As part of this project, we went ahead and we took a look in regards to what the impacts would be on the traffic for the surrounding roadway network. As part of our study, we looked at quite a few intersections in the area. We looked at the Old Tower Hill Road, Kingston Road intersection. We looked at Pershing Avenue with Old Tower Hill Road intersection, the proposed site entrance, and then Pershing Avenue and MacArthur Boulevard, and then Kingston Road and MacArthur Boulevard. So we took a look just to see where the traffic would be from those areas. As been mentioned before, as far as the traffic patterns would be projected from the site, they are looking to go ahead and implement a right turn only out of the site. And I think Mr. Costa talked upon that, and he also talked about the other thing. But I'll go through a little bit in regards to what our study did. You know, so in order to go ahead and complete our study, we started off with a significant amount of data collection. We did traffic counts during weekend or weekday peak hours and then on Saturday midday peak hours, we look at different conditions. We also did extensive amount of fieldwork to observe traffic patterns, observe the parking, what's happening on the surrounding area, in particular in regards to the site and then also the abutting businesses next door and the parking that's available there. With the study, once we did all our data collection, and we also gathered some crash data as well, just take a look at the historic traffic crash accidents that are occurring at Pershing Ave and Old Tower Hill Road. Once we're complete with the data collection, we performed our traffic capacity analysis and our traffic safety analysis. And we went and we developed that in regards to looking at the peak hour conditions. You know, I'll talk about the traffic capacity analysis first. What we looked at were three different conditions. We looked at the existing conditions, and that's with the existing traffic volumes. I do want to note that we did take our traffic volumes that we gathered and based on our coordination with Rhode Island Department of Transportation, Massachusetts Department of Transportation. And with the pandemic that was ongoing, we have worked on other projects where they have stated that traffic is approximately 90% of what it was pre-COVID. So we did put an inflation factor on that to get our existing conditions by adding 10% of the traffic to all all traffic flows occurring in the area. In addition to looking at the existing conditions, we we took a look in regards to the future conditions. And there's two conditions that we look at in the future. One is future no build, which takes into account any background growth traffic that may occur just based on, you know, development in the area and just the amount of, you know, population growth or whatever it may be. Looking at census data, which you usually use to see what the population growth is, we found it was about 0.4% annual growth. But to remain conservative, we rounded that up to 0.5. So we imply we went and we applied that to all the traffic volumes to get what the future growth would be. We also take a look at for future projects or future traffic, other projects that may be occurring in the area. We did coordinate that with the town. The only projects they they were aware that were occurring were the other dispensary buildings that were approved, you know, preliminarily through the town that were coming through. But I think, as you know, that, you know, the one site that was selected for for South Kingston was the site we're talking about tonight. So we did not add any more traffic for any of those other potential developments for dispensary units. Then afterward, the future no build, we looked at the future build conditions. And what that does, that takes into account in regards to the amount of trips that are generated from this particular site. We did look at different ways as far as coming up with what the the site could generate from this for this type of use. And a lot of those, the first one that we looked at was in regards to taking a look in regards to what some of the existing volumes are, some of the existing sites. As you know, there's three current sites in the state, and those three are serving the whole population of the state of Rhode Island for medical marijuana purposes. Six other sites have been approved, which are been approved per zones, so they are distributed throughout the state. So we did take a look in regards to what those volumes were that were occurring with that with those sites. Another option that we went in, we took a look at is in regards to the amount of population in the area and particularly Washington County area, South Kingston area. We did take a look in regards to what the volumes are occurring and that the amount of traffic that would be occurring based on the number of residents that are in the Washington County area. You know, we looked at the communities that are in Washington County, and we feel that, you know, Wesley, Charleston, South Kingston, Narragansett, Hopkinton, would probably all be using the site, and they're probably a good portion of Exeter and North Kingston. But we went ahead and we used the total population for the Washington County and applied what's going to be occurring there. As been mentioned, there's approximately 20,000 licenses. You know, with a 1.1 million residents, it's about 1.8% of the population have license. So we use that number in order to come up with the number of patients that would be occurring within this county. With that, we divided and we made some numbers in regards to the average trip per day. And we came up with the volumes during the peak hours of being about 50 trips per hour. That seems to match in regards to one of the components we were looking at as far as a similar site that we're given from from the clients or applicant based on a site that they had down in Maryland, the number of trips that they are providing. They had a community, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. I believe it's 34,000 residents, you know, seems similar size to South Kingston where the chat's about 30,000. And their volumes were were about 42 trips per hour during a weekday and a 30 in a weekend. So we felt that those were aligned, but we went and we still stayed conservative. We took the site in Portsmouth. We assumed that 50% of the traffic from that site would be what's come to this site. So with that being said, we ended up using traffic distribution and traffic generation of about 71 total trips during a peak hour, which, you know, we feel is on the high side compared to what we anticipate generating from this site. With the analysis that was done for the intersection that I described before, there was no decrease in level of services. The intersections of Old Tower Hill Road, Kingston, MacArthur, Kingston, and Pershing and MacArthur Boulevard show really no significant delays that are occurring. We did take our conservative approach at the Pershing Ave, Old Tower Hill Road intersection. And as been mentioned, based on the results of that and based on discussions with the town, we did take a look in regards to adding a right turn lane in there. Again, right now, you know, there's Again, right now, you know, there's the show the decrease in levels, the level of service stays the same, there is an increase in delay based on the volumes. There's a lot of things that we did not take into account the fact that there is another driveway from the site that's on Old Tower Hill Road that may have some of the traffic go to there, we would assume that some of it would if there is traffic coming out of Pershing. But we kept it, like I said, again, conservative. Also coming out to Old Tower Hill Road, as you know, with the reconstruction out there, there's now a center turn lane, which we believe will help with the traffic being able to exit the site. And not have to go ahead and go straight into two lanes of traffic as it was prior to the the construction. So that's, you know, summary in regards to capacity. We also looked at the safety analysis. You know, we found at the intersection over a three-year period, there was three crashes at the intersection of Pershing and Old Tower Hill Road. As I mentioned before, we have put a request into the South Kingston Police and I know one of our engineers has talked to them. And I believe we're going to get updated information that will show more current information that may come about. We think with some of the safety improvements that occur with Old Tower Hill Road that have been recently done, that the safety should be improved, but you know, we should be getting that information. I believe they say they would have it to us by the end of this week. We also looked at as far as safety, the sight lines coming out of the site. And if you come out of the site, there is good sight lines, there is revised planting plan that's been proposed, which I believe the landscape architect will talk in further detail. But pulling out the site and looking to the south, you're able to see down to Arnold Arnold Road. So we feel that the sight lines that are needed based on the design speeds will exceed what's required for ASH to as far as be able to safely pull in and out that site. The last thing I'll talk about in regards to the parking. We did look at the parking based on two components. One was regards to zoning ordinance. And based on square footage of buildings that are there in the adjacent site. And also based on our observations as far as the parking that is that is occurring out in the plaza that has the De Angelos and the nail nail salon and such and the the parking spaces are available, we feel that this space will also have more than enough parking that's needed. We think with the nineteen that's being provided, that should be sufficient. Particularly in regards to the operations that Mr. Costa talked about as far as how quick customers come in and they're able to go ahead and get them off the site. So we feel that that's going to go ahead and work, but there is a need, there is some additional parking next door that has been talked about with the the tenant over over in that area. That's a summary in regards to what we did for the traffic study. You know, I will talk about one more thing as far as traffic, I apologize, but the there's also been discussions with the South Kingston Police Department. If there is a need for circulation and directing traffic. The client, our client has gone in and spoken with them and they are willing to go ahead and provide any necessary services they have for help with traffic flow, so that'll also be incorporated on an added needed basis. So we're in the opinion based on what they're proposing here, based on operations of other sites, based on what we've done for data collection and analysis that we feel the site could be to be developed without having any significant impact to the track capacity or safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chevlin.
Thank you.
I I would imagine there will be quite a few questions from board members relative to traffic. We understand that there are ongoing conversations with DPS, thus the memo that came out today. But I think that probably there are quite a few questions that will will be of interest. Questions from board members? Paul?
I'm just curious, you mentioned the work that's been done on Tower Hill Road, particularly, you know, the new cycling lanes, the traffic calming features that have been added. Fifty trips per hour peak. Do you look at pedestrians or cyclists at all while you're out there doing that? Is that part of the data collection?
That was with our traffic counts, we did go ahead and gather bicycle information and pedestrians.
Okay, any anything else you want to say about that?
You know, the numbers when we did that traffic council, we did do our traffic counts in December. So there at that time, there weren't a lot of bicycles in that area, but you know, I think with the the striping and the pavement markings and the signage. And then what's been incorporated into there, I think it, you know, should be safely to go ahead and be able to be traveled.
Thank you. Other questions? Susan?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chevlin for explaining your traffic study with us. I do have some questions about your traffic study. So we, this is not the first compassion center that we've reviewed in town. So what I did was I pulled out the projects that had been presented to us in the past. And your traffic data for the volume of traffic traveling through the intersection of Kingston Road and MacArthur, no, sorry, and between Kingston Road and Old Tower Hill Road is much less than the other data that we received from other organizations, including one done by Par for the Winding Road Compassion Center. It's hundreds less per hour traveling through that intersection. And I guess I'd like to get clarification on your numbers. You have, you know, at four o'clock, you've got five hundred cars, they had seven hundred and forty-five. And a report done by another engineering firm had eight hundred and seventy-six cars driving through that intersection in one direction per hour. So yours are a lot less, and I guess I'd like some clarification on your data at that intersection and why it would be so significantly different from other reports that we've received.
Yeah, I would have to, we did not do a winding road. There's another firm, but I know we went out there, we had a professional sub consultant go out on those days that we mentioned before, I believe it was December twelfth and nineteenth. In order to get data collection, you know, which was current and existing information. I'd have to go back and take a look at other studies that may have been performed at the at the intersection and see what those volumes were. The counts that we had were were the, you know, recent counts that we did for this study.
Mr. Chevlin, if I may, in 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 reviewing your information, you did take into account and added in multipliers with regards to the fact that we are our counts may be reduced due to COVID and and those type of things, is that fair to say?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I would like to maybe get some clarification though, because the other studies were also done in January and November, they weren't summer traffic. Which, as you might know, absolutely explodes down here for four months out of the year. So I think that when we're looking at traffic, we also need to consider that our traffic from May to September is double what it is right now in the dead of in the dead of winter. I would also like to talk about your trips per hour and your calculations there. Again, I compared your numbers to those from the other four potential locations that we had received data from. And other potential sites had ninety-five trips per hour, seventy-five trips per hour. And in your report, you've got thirty-five. And it seems significant significantly less in trip generation than we had from other sites. And I also see that you used your location in only Maryland as a basis to go by. But a quick Google search showed that there are six six compassion centers within a fifteen-mile radius of your only only location. And this is serving not a town of thirty thousand residents, like only, but it's serving a hundred and twenty-five thousand in in all of South County, in Washington County. So we are serving with this location a much larger population than only Maryland. Where you have another shop six minutes down the road, like this is the only shop that will be down in Washington County. So I think that your trip generation, I'm I apologize, but I'm a little suspicious of these low numbers for trip generation for your site.
Yes, yeah, just to clarify, we did not use the site in Maryland. We had that as information that we include in the report saying it was a possibility that you know, this is this is somewhat of a similar site that we're going to, and we had that as an option, but we did not use that. And we ended up using the trips that were used from other sites, we took a significant percentage from them, said they were going to be going to this site. So we looked at what's what's going on right now in Providence, Warwick, and we looked at the other six zones. Then we made assumption regards to how much will we draw from the other ones and that's a calculation that I was just talking about in regards to if you took a look at the population in Washington County and came up with a number, that's where I came up with the it would be fifty trips, but we are projecting that there's going to be seventy over seventy trips per hour. With the thirty-five in thirty-six out. That's based on based on the existing number of sites that are there and some of the traffic is going to be coming from those sites.
Okay, so you yours, so you are saying thirty-five in and thirty-five out?
Yes.
Sorry, so is that thirty-five trips or is that seventy trips?
That's seventy trips. The they consider a trip to be in and out.
Okay, so so we received a couple of other ones, you know, earlier just last year. And they had ninety-five entering and ninety-five exiting, seventy-five entering, seventy-five exiting. Is that absolutely ridiculous or is that potentially something that you might see at this site and yet we don't want to be caught unprepared for that volume if that's what it turns out to be?
No, understood. I I think that is a high number in regards to what would occur at this site. I think looking at in regards to what's occurring at the other sites, which are only three in the state in the numbers. Then take into account that there is now going to be nine in the state and based on the number of licenses that are out there and based on the population of certain areas, I think that's a high number that they were carrying.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chevlin, follow up to Susan's question about population and how you made your calculations. If you, when you did your calculations, if you took a percentage of existing clients. Where in your calculations did you allow for an increase, given the fact that we in the state and in Washington County specifically have an aging population? Did you account for any of that?
Imagine, no, we we went and we took a look in regards where the existing licenses that are out there right now.
Also, in your narrative, there is conversation about if traffic significantly exceeds the projected volumes when the site first opens due to its newness, willing to take customers by appointment only to disperse the traffic flows and want to know what the criteria and the timeframe is for that. What what will be the trigger? And what kind of enforcement measures could be undertaken if there appears to be a problem moving forward?
So I'll be happy to, this is Boy Costa speaking in regards to that, you know, when we looked at some of the numbers. The medical marijuana program has begun to plateau and as far as how many new patients are being added a year as it's under a ten percent growth. I'm starting to become matching the population growth within the cap within the town. In addition, you know, looking at what our patient, you know, calculating the two percent of the population coming from Washington, the whole county itself. You know, we believe that the we'd be willing to explore that option for a condition upon the license, upon the awarding of a a special use permit, but we believe this could be done in two parts with one part being a condition. You know, in the event that we see, we set metrics for a traffic pattern that is exceeded and impeded in neighboring businesses. That we implement the first course of action, which be which would be the modification of Persian Old Tower Hill Road. And then we'd be happy to explore a trigger at which you know, our engineer and the town engineer feels that any additional impact would you know, be a negative, any additional traffic would be a negative impact to the neighboring businesses and community, at which point that metric would trigger the appointment only, but we believe between our current traffic mitigation and our proposed supplemental mitigation plan with the improvements to the intersection that there wouldn't be a need for an appointment only operation.
Mr. Ms. Chair, if I may as well, if there, as you can tell, the applicants take great care to speak to members of staff in town, the police department, et cetera. If they were to receive a complaint from anyone from your public works department to your police department or even your any other portion of your staff, including your planning department. I'm sure that they could take steps to address those things right away if Saturday afternoon requires a police detail in the first month, things like that that we can work with. I think the applicant's shown a willingness and an ability to address those type of crop problems that crop up.
Thank you. I think it's important for us to address the specifics early on so that we don't find ourselves in a difficult position sometime in the future. Other questions, comments relative to traffic and circulation from board members? Paul?
A couple of things, you mentioned people ordering online and having things delivered. Is that, I'm thinking if if traffic were to increase to to a degree that it was a problem, is that something you could do more of? And I'm thinking specifically about, you know, online video consultation, that sort of thing. I think I would prefer to see that before I saw the intersection modified. Anything that could be done to just reduce the need for people to come in at all?
That's a great point, Mr. Jordan. You know, that's something we intend to do and we have been working closely with the state regulators to ensure that we can have the most comprehensive plan implemented for launch. When we launch this business, we all encourage one online consultations with one of our patient counselors through a HIPAA-secured means of communications. Two, to utilize our online and over-the-phone delivery system. There'll be monetary incentives for patients to utilize these services such as discounts. So for us, it's part of our operational model to offer these from the start and to work with the community. We've started to meet with patient coalition within the state to address these and see how the best way to implement it is. Currently of the three compassion centers, only one compassion center is offering this service and it's been well received. We understand it's logistically challenging for some of these businesses to operate it. We have experience in delivery services with the use of over-the-phone and app slash internet services. So we are experienced in operating a proficient delivery system and pickup system, so. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jordan?
I think so, thank you.
Other questions from board members? Perhaps you could answer a couple of additional questions you reference in your narrative. Features, multimodal features such as bicycle racks and pedestrian crosswalks. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah.
No, you go ahead, John.
Yeah, I was just mentioning, as far as the report that we had in there, you know, we've gone ahead and usually we do a traffic study, do look at other multimodal uses and we just wanted to note that, you know, Ripton does have bus service and has stops right at that, we're pretty close to that intersection, I think it's like four hundred feet on each side of the roadway. So there is opportunities for somebody to use public transportation if need be as far as a customer, but we didn't take that into account as far as any of our numbers. And then same thing as far as you take, we take a look in regards to for a traffic study as far as bicycle and pedestrian accommodations and we just noted that you know, with the reconstruction of Old Tower Hill Road, it certainly does accommodate bicyclists that occur in that area. Similarly, better pedestrian access in the area as well, but again, we did not take that into account as far as any of our numbers, as far as withdrawing, thinking that people would come on bikes or be walking.
So you don't think people will come on bikes or walks?
We, no, we, but we we didn't include that in any of our numbers. We we kept it where we assumed anybody's comment is based on the numbers we analyzed or based on people coming in cars. But there certainly could be people who are locally who could be taking their bikes.
Right, so my question is, what is your plan for bicycle racks or you, there's a reference to crosswalks? How does that fit into your plan as a whole?
Well, in the proposed plant and plan, we do show a bicycle rack located outside of our facility for individuals to secure the bicycles if a patient does need to. Use as transportation to get to our facility and being an avid cyclist, I'm pro people riding their bikes and saving the environment. However, in regards to crosswalks. Our current plans don't reflect any additional crosswalks to the area that we see that we deemed necessary.
Because this is that that language is contained in your narrative, but it's not particularly clear.
Okay, understood.
There is also reference to a potential shuttling of employees to an alternate off-site location. Can you be more specific as to what the trigger might be for that, what numbers you're thinking about, what the location might be and so on?
Yes, during TRC, this came up as far as in the event that parking wasn't suitable. Based on, you know, analysis, we do believe parking is more than suitable for our needs. However, in the event we needed to free up spaces. We would work with a shuttle service in order to provide off-site parking for our team members in order to free up spaces for patients. As far as a trigger for that, I don't have an exact metric I can speak to.
Hey, I was hoping for Hey, I was hoping for more specifics than that. So perhaps that's something that you can bring back to us. Other questions from board members? Susan?
Sorry. I would like to inquire about the neighborhood to the, to the south on Pershing Road and MacArthur Boulevard, and how we hope to protect that neighborhood from excessive traffic. You even stated in your report that you expect the majority of your visitors to come from Route One. So if I get off Route One down by the Rotary and Narragansett, if I take a right at MacArthur Boulevard at the post office, I can avoid three lights through the town and pull in the backside of your store. And how will you prevent the majority of people from sensibly avoiding all of those lights down through Dale Carlia Corner and going through that back neighborhood? And then in turn, leaving the site, it's not difficult to take a left coming out of your parking lot because you've got multiple accesses to the parking lot. And again, avoid downtown and just run back through the neighborhood behind the store. And how will we protect those residents from fifty trips an hour during your peak period?
Mr. Chevlin, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, yeah, as you mentioned before, I mean, as far as cars leaving the site, they are going to be putting a raised island in, and they're going to have signage, go ahead and have traffic go towards Old Tower Hill Road. That's the intensity of the applicant. The applicant wants to be a good neighbor and try to minimize any impacts to the neighborhood. So he's willing to go ahead and put in a right turn only coming out of the site. As far as trips coming from points south, you know, there's, there's traffic now that does come up. It goes from MacArthur to Pershing. There's other uses in that area that you go in and you see that generates traffic that comes in that area, you know, particularly bagels and such, so they have the traffic in there. But, you know, we don't have anything in place in order to go ahead and try to limit any of those trips coming there. But we feel that the trips are going to be distributed throughout the area. You know, points on Route One, heading both northbound, southbound, points on 108, heading southbound. Those could be distributed. So there may be some traffic that does go to the site through MacArthur, but we don't think that numbers could be all that high.
If it is that high, is there something in place or can we set something in place to somehow limit that? Because I appreciate your raised island, that will definitely steer traffic out to the right. But there's another entrance just to the, to the north of that, where you can exit in any direction you please. It's, if it's, and getting, I'm sorry, and getting out of Pershing and taking a left onto Old Tower Hill Road takes a while, like, there's a lot of cars that you need to, it's pretty, there's a lot of traffic there. So I, I would think that folks would just avoid that at any cost and just scoot out the back way on Pershing. And I'm concerned about the neighborhood back there.
Ms. Assarad, we, we're limited to some extent what we can do in the roadway as it's a public road. That roadway is open now, so there's, there are, the folks that choose to go that way do, but it is an underutilized roadway. I think it will remain that way based on the actions that Mr. Chevlin has put out there. We can certainly speak to the public works department about if they have recommendations or if Mr. Chevlin has a specific recommendation. But we're limited to controlling what's going on in the site. We can't go outside of the bounds of the four corners of the.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Ms. Assarad, as you know, it was just stated, I mean, we certainly can work with public works to see, I mean, a lot of times when you have issues like this and you, you want to put in traffic calming measures or something to go ahead and try to, you know, have people go ahead and avoid an area. Sometimes those aren't all popular with the neighbors. So that's something we could talk to public works to see if there's a means in there to go ahead and try to do that. But, you know, it's something we'd have to further discuss. Like I said, we looked at it, and we didn't think there's going to be a lot of traffic that's going to be cut through there in order to come to this site. But we can certainly work with the town and see if there's any mechanism that they would agree that could be put in place.
Thank you.
Mr. Chevlin, I know that Susan mentioned the fact that we are a coastal community with significant seasonal impacts. But I'm not clear on how you put that into your calculations and how, how, how you're going to demonstrate that, that will not be an impact to your, your data.
Well, if I may, just very briefly, Ms. Chair, our clientele is a year-round clientele. So for the most part, we're catering to residents of the state who have a very specific criteria that have a medical marijuana card and have gone through that process. So I think we do have to take into account, and I'm sure Mr. Chevlin will address, increases in the overall road, but I don't anticipate us having, that this project having a big seasonal swing as many other retail locations do, based on that.
Thank you. I was more referring to the level of service with regard to seasonal impact.
Yeah, I mean, we can go ahead and see what historical data that there may be available for summertime counts and see what's out there. But, you know, overall, the volumes that we anticipate from the site are going to be the same. And, you know, our results from the study that we did right now did not have any significant impact. There had no impact on level of service, but no significant impact on the amount of delay at the major intersections in the area. But we can go ahead and take a look to see what we can find as far as seasonal counts that may have occurred. As I said, we were brought on board to do this study in December, so we obviously don't have counts for July and August. But we could take a look to see if there's any other historical data that we could take a look at.
Thank you. I think that would be really important, and we are looking at a level of service F to start with. So I think more information is warranted. And again, I understand you are having conversations with DPS, but I think these are questions that are going to be brought up again and again. Other thoughts from board members? If there are none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand if you desire to ask questions or make any comments. I don't see anyone's hand raised at this point. Rich, can you give us sort of a brief, a couple of brief comments on where DPS is at with this, given the fact that we probably have not had time to digest the recent memo and what you'd be looking for going forward?
Yeah, I think, I think you may have my memo that I prepared. But, you know, following, you know, supplying that to the applicant, they called, we had a, what I thought was a pretty productive meeting where we kind of fleshed out a number of issues. You know, initially, and I, and I showed this in my memo, but initially, I had some concerns that we had other projects in town that had greater numbers than what this had. But that was really early on. And, and since then, they've revised their numbers. And I think once they looked at taking, and I believe it was as high as, I don't know if it was sixty or seventy percent of the numbers, John, you can clarify that, but from the, the, I guess that would be the East Bay facility, and saying that's going to get, that's going to get put over in this facility, that brought the numbers up quite a bit for what would be the peak hour. And, you know, generally, I felt pretty comfortable with that number. And John Shock, we both talked about it at length, and we felt comfortable with that number. But it certainly was a, an increase to some of the earlier numbers that were being provided. Now, with that in mind, what happened with this site is that we, and it's not, the, the, the level of service at the intersection of Pershing is a, is a level of service F. And it's going to stay in a level of service F. It's just a little bit of a worse level of service F. And it's really the wait time and the stacking of vehicles on that intersection back. So we had a concern that, that the vehicles were going to be stacking beyond even the bagels parking lot. And, and we didn't want to see that. And it would even be going right up to this parking with this exit here that we're talking about. So we didn't want to see that. So we suggested that modifications to that Pershing Ave intersection be made in order to allow for a dedicated right and a dedicated left so that you could consolidate the traffic going out to a half, effectively, not maybe, not, I think it was even fifty-fifty is what the numbers were, so fifty percent, fifty percent. So you would, you would be able to cut in half that stacking length, which would put in, make it, I think, much more reasonable. I don't know that the, the level of service changes. I think it probably still remains enough, but it, it still makes the condition much better for this facility. I thought that was a good, a good discussion. I, you know, and subsequently, now, we only received, and I apologize Blake and John, that we just received a memo today, but I spoke with John earlier this evening. And, you know, we're of the opinion that, that that, that improvement really should happen as part of this. You know, that would be our opinion. It's not, it's not our decision, but it would be our opinion that that really happens as part of this application because we're really going off of your numbers. And by the way, there, there, there are numbers that we don't really know necessarily. Like, nobody's got those, you know, IT doesn't have those numbers. It's not, it's not like we can really know for sure. And I'd like to think that they're pretty accurate. And I believe that what John, what John's saying is, is I'm comfortable with that, that we, that, that this is a conservative look at it. But, you know, Pershing Ave is already a difficult intersection. And, and I think, I believe that those improvements really kind of should happen as part of this application. And I understand the hundred and twenty days, and I get that, but I just don't know that. I think that it may want to happen as part of this, this application at this point. Blake?
Rich, this is, sorry, Madam Chair, I'm asking a question for Rich. Rich, this is Blake. I definitely understand, and, you know, we're willing to take the steps to make these modifications. You know, in order to come to middle ground on that hundred and twenty days, if we did all the, you know, preparatory work in order to ensure that if such impact does happen on this road, we'd be able to execute set improvements immediately, such as, we've already been in talks with DOT for pre-permanent meetings, you know, establishing everything with DOT in the town, submitting all the plans with the intentions of being prepared to make such modifications quickly in the event they're warranted. Would that be something you and John would be open to? You know, a condition of this prior to the special use being issued, we would have said permits in hand, completed drawings, approvals from DOT. And then we would just wait on the hundred and twenty day review to see what the impact to the current service is and how far that queue line really extends. And if that.
Madam Chair, Jamie Abbott, Planning Director, by Ken Rich.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Go ahead.
I understand Blake's question. This is a public hearing tonight. It's not a negotiation. To put Ms. May's on the spot this evening, I, I think is unfair, given the fact we got the report today. What I would say back to Blake is, unless you can control your permit, it needs to be part of this process. If this was a conditionally approved on the fact that the state required the improvement, and the state says no, after a hundred and twenty days, are you shutting your operation down and moving out of town? Because you can't, the commission has difficulties delegating away approval authority to outside agencies. So your own engineer said that there's an issue with stacking and blocking that lower entrance. And the solution to that, in his analysis, is to do a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn, exiting the side road. It's not an if and when, because the, the commission control shutting you down after a hundred and twenty days when the infrastructure isn't there, the state has an acquiesce to the, you, your ability to approve within the state right away. So I agree with Rich that this is something that needs to be vetted more. Again, we got some sketches and plans today. I think we need an opportunity to react as a staff, work, planning board, have additional conversations with you as the applicant versus asking for definitive opinions this evening based on information and submittals received this afternoon.
Yeah, and Blake, that's, that's exactly what I was going to suggest, is that we have this discussion, and, and you included at some point, but, but we have to, you know, think about how that really happens and if it can happen in that fashion, what you're describing. We just haven't had the opportunity to figure that out.
No, I understand, I appreciate it.
I think we can address that, and we'll have some, we'll speak to your staff about some concerns. I don't think Mr. Costa was in any way suggesting to delegate any authority from this board, though we know that this board is the controlling board, and we do want to address all the issues here. So I think that, that's certainly said. Madam Chair, I defer to the board if there are additional questions on traffic. Otherwise, I do have our Insight Engineering, Paul Carlson, who would like to, I'd like to prefer, I'd like to have to make some statements to the board as well.
Very good. And Jamie, thanks for your comments. If there are no other questions or comments relative to traffic, let's move on to your engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carlson, if you could, as everyone has done, briefly describe yourself and your role in this project.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Paul Carlson, Principal Engineer with Insight Engineering, professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island, practicing engineer for thirty years. We are representing the applicant for this project. And I'll keep my statements fairly brief and quick overview of the, of the site and the proposed changes within the site. Most of you are aware, the existing site contains two specific buildings, an existing commercial building which faces Tower Hill Road. As John mentioned, Ludens, the D'Angelo's and the Nail Salon, and the existing office building that is the project, this project resides. The site does not lie in any flood zones, does not lie in the Narrow River Special Management Area, Salt Pond Special Area Management, Round Water Protection Overlay District, and the TMDL watershed area. The site.
Excuse me, I think this is a TMDL area.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry. The site, it has connections with the municipal water sewer and drainage, and also has gas and electric service as its own standalone to this building. The site is lined with fifteen parking spaces, one loading zone that we are proposing to be fenced with a six-foot security fence, a new handicap ramp added to the front face of the building. Existing, the existing trash dumpster, which is located between the two buildings, will also, will be also screened. A new generator will be added to the rear of the building in the event of power failure in significant areas. We're also adding underground infiltration system for the rooftop to help improvement of the drainage, you know, around the site. And also, we are proposing a reduction in the imperviousy area in, in, by increasing some of the landscape features along the southerly edge of the building and the site. As, as John and Blake have mentioned, the site has been redesigned to have that right-hand turn only egress with the bountiful curbs. And with that, we believe that the site improvements, including the reduced imperviousy areas, the, you know, improved grading and drainage, aesthetic improvements, maneuvering in the landscape will be a significant factor of improvements for the site.
Thank you. Questions, comments relative to engineering, stormwater, and so on? Mr. Carlson, can you tell us exactly how much of a reduction you feel there will be in runoff due to the increase in landscape areas? Do you have a number or a percentage or something that we could?
The, certainly. The reduction is about, about nine hundred square feet. And that is taken into consideration, the increase of the ten foot landscape area on the southern side, and then in the removal of a couple of the existing parking spaces that have been turned into landscape.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Susan?
I have a question, which is, it may be waiting for landscaping, but it mentions that you may be introducing rain gardens to storm, to manage storm runoff. Is that part of this project?
There was a discussion to incorporate rain gardens along the. Uh, there was a discussion to incorporate, uh, rain gardens along the, uh, the increased landscape area along the southerly side, but as you're where, there are giant arborvitae's that line that, uh, southerly edge, and the impacts to those arborvitae's, uh, would be, uh, significant in, in incorporating the bio-retention or the rain gardens. Uh, so, as I mentioned, the incorporation of the underground infiltration for the rooftop uh, is also just a mitigation that we're having, but, uh, to, to specifically answer your question, no, there are no, uh, rain gardens being incorporated to this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to ask a question or make a comment relative to engineering or stormwater? Uh, Mr. Costa, you have the floor. Let's move on to the next topic.
Um, Madam Chair, we do have our landscaped architect. Her name is Catherine. If she could be promoted, I don't believe she's been promoted yet.
Uh, Catherine is on her way.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thanks, Jay.
Hi, Ca- Catherine, it looks like you're muted. If you could unmute.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Uh, good evening. My name is Catherine Weaver. Um, I am a landscape designer and principal of the landscape architecture firm Tupelo Design Studio. I have been, um, owner and principal for twenty-plus years. I also serve on the Rhode Island Nursery and Landscape Association Board, and am an adjunct professor in the Department of Landscape Architecture at the University of Rhode Island. Um, under my direction, my office prepared the planting film for this project. And, um, we have done our best to preserve, um, significant landscape plants on-site that are currently doing, um, a very good job of screening and buffering neighbors such as the arborvitae's along the south portion, uh, the south boundary of the property. Um, there are also three large existing rhododendrons in the south corner right here, which are in good shape and do significant screening from the road. Um, we have, um, kept the, um, the canopy trees on-site that exist currently in the plant beds. We've expanded the plant beds to meet the requirement of ten feet. We have utilized, um, native plants in our proposed plant list, and we have provided significant evergreen screening from the road along Pershing Avenue. Right here, and, um, also buffering along the plant bed, um, the existing plant bed, adjacent to the loading zone for, um, D'Angelo's.
Thank you. Um, uh, there was a reference to some canopy trees. Um, have you, um, considered the health of those trees and future survival?
Um, well, we would recommend that they be reviewed by a certified arborist um, for any, um, pruning and evaluation of their existing health, obviously. If they were found to have significant rot or, um, other diseases that would, uh, preclude their demise, then, you know, they would be, they would be removed from the planting zone, but we would try and be respectful of the, um, character of the existing trees on-site as they do add, um, both cooling to the parking lot and, um, aesthetic value to the property.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments from board members relative to landscaping?
Um, just a question on that proposed lamp post. How high is that? And I just want to make sure that's not going to have any impact to the neighboring residential house.
Proposed lamp post. I believe the, um,
This is like, uh, Carl Lettler engineer couldn't make it today. Um, I don't have the height of a lamp post in front of me, but we did choose a fixture that has, um, blocking capabilities to where there's a negligible, negligible impact on, uh, the neighboring property. So we have our light.
Is it possible to illuminate that area with low-lying posts such that the, uh, light itself is below the landscape?
Yeah, the trees right there, um, Catherine, do you, do you remember how tall those trees are? They're significant height, and from what I recall, the current posts that are on-site, they actually, uh, tower above the posts themselves, so we'd be maintaining that height of the current post.
Is it, there's a hedge right there? Um, how high is that hedge? And how high is your, if you can, um, maybe get a little more information on how high that hedge is and how high the, uh, lamp post is. Again, I just want to make sure we're not illuminating, um, the neighboring residential property.
Yes, sir. Even with, um, we'll get that data, even without any hedge line there, there'd be no illumination leading over to the neighboring property.
The existing arborvitae hedge, um, is at least between eighteen and twenty feet tall. It's, it's quite significant.
And, and we, we're going to be able to keep that post below that height?
Yes, sir.
Susan?
Um, hi, I, uh, I love your choice of landscape plants of native species that are wildlife-friendly. But I have a couple of questions about the bed that's to the left of D'Angelo, where you have some cornice and some cathera. And, um, I think that both of those are more of a wet-foot kind of species that, you know, drying out in a hot salty sandy bed may not be, um, they would need some more maintenance, especially to get established. Then maybe some other choices? Am I, am I, am I wrong?
Well, you, you are correct in identifying both of those plants as being typically found in, um, uh, on the edges of wetland areas. However, plants that do well, um, in wetland area, areas are also known to do quite well in, in the opposite, because the condition to the roots is the same. They're starved. For oxygen from either being inundated in water or, um, not receiving enough water. So both of these plants are extremely tough, and I've used them in a variety of different soil conditions and landscape applications.
Okay, so you're, you're believing that both would be okay in this hot, dry, dusty bed? Thank you. Um, if there is a, an additional travel lane put here, I assume that that land would come from this planting bed? Or would it be entirely removing this planting bed? Do, do you know that?
There, this is like, there'd be, there'd be no impact on that plant and bed with additional travel lane on the current curb cut would allow for both travel lanes and the multiple curb.
So if you had three travel lanes there, you wouldn't need to remove this bed?
Uh, there's only going to be, we're proposing two travel lanes for our proposed plan.
Um, I apologize. The plans that we received earlier today, though, had a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane there in front of that planting bed?
Oh, as far as, uh, moving the two foot? You're talking about going, uh, north on Persian at the old Tower Hill Road intersection?
Yes.
I'm just looking at the plan set right now. I can't answer that. Paul, um.
Yes, uh, I'll, I'll jump in here. The, the, the three lanes or the two turning lanes that would be added would be actually to the north of this, uh, northerly, uh, entrance. So this particular, uh, landscaped area would not be impacted. It would be north of this area that the third lane would be added.
I see. Thank you. That, that explains this. Thank you. Um, and then my last question about landscaping is the row of yews that's through the middle of the parking lot? And I see that you're hoping to have them grow to five to six feet high. Would there be a plan to sort of renovate those shrubs? They've been harshly sheared and the bottoms aren't. The, the bottoms are in tough shape. Would they be renovated or just allowed to grow in taller?
Well, um, I, the plan was to allow them to grow in taller. Uh, yews are, are an incredibly resilient and tough plant. They can take all manner of, uh, butchery and abuse and still survive. So I think with just a little TLC, um, and an abatement of the severe pruning that they've been receiving for their, um, known lives, they'll respond quite quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Uh, so while we're looking at this landscape plan, and maybe it's just not to scale, but I'm looking at the loading area with the vehicle parked in it, and I guess what is a, a security gate shown in red. Can the vehicle actually get in and out of there if somebody's parked in that handicap spot number seven? It looks like it's a van-accessible spot, so again, maybe it's just not to scale, but it doesn't look like a truck could actually get through there.
No, Mr. Jordan, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. If a car is parked in the handicap space, their loading area is not functional.
So if a truck comes in while someone parked there, it's just parked in the middle of the lot, waiting for someone to leave.
It, it blocks three additional parking spaces and makes the circulation difficult.
So, so that's going to be corrected?
Um, well, in accordance with our operating procedures, I personally manage the, um, deliver, the deliveries of products to our facility. Those are done after hours. So this space would only be utilized after hours. We wouldn't be accepting deliveries during operating hours.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And we would agree to that being a condition of approval if required.
Thank you. Any additional, uh, questions or comments from board members relative to landscaping? Susan?
Sorry, can I, can I ask a question following up on Paul's question? If you were doing deliveries from this site, would the deliveries that you would be making also use that space to securely put your product into your vehicle during, during business hours?
Deliveries would be utilized in a different method. Um, we want to limit the access to the rear entry door due to security reasons. Um, the delivery driver would exit through the front with a secured bag. In addition, we are currently working with regulators, um, in order to utilize an off-site location that has a license that we operate a licensed candidate cultivation facility to, um, manage our deliveries from. So to answer your question, now deliveries are going to be utilized in the loading area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience who has questions or comments relative to landscaping? None at this point. Um, Mr. Skirda or Mr. Costa, do you have any additional team members who wish to speak?
At this time, we don't, um, we would normally have Mr. Pimentel, who I believe did a brief presentation last time to speak to conformity with the comprehensive plan. Um, and in, to further reiterate that the two, what I would describe as minor waivers that we're requesting do not in any way affect um, the continuity of this project with your comprehensive plan. Um, and in fact, ultimately, uh, we're asking for those for all betterment of the project, specifically those sightlines with regards to the, um, vegetated strip buffer area. And we are looking to actually reduce the size of the loading area, uh, versus, uh, expand it as it's typically done. Uh, we don't believe that those two requirements were necessarily contemplating this type of, uh, project, but even if they were, we believe we're certainly meeting the, uh, goals of those two tenants in there, in that we are in conformity with your comprehensive plan. I would just, uh, Madam Chair, at the time you feel appropriate, just reiterate, uh, and make sure that we properly understand the concerns and questions the board has, so that when we come back before the board, we can address them directly.
Yes, excellent thought. Um, any further comments from board members at this time? And hearing none, it's, uh, there, there will be, uh, continued conversations between the applicant and DPS and the planning department. Uh, I think that, um, some more specifics about, um, off-site parking would be helpful. Um, any additional questions that have been asked relative to the traffic study that have not been answered this evening would also be important. Um, anything else that planning board members would like to have, uh, researched for the next meeting?
Um, I just wanted information on that lamp post, that's all.
Yes, lamp post. Thank you, Joe. Uh, would someone then like to make a motion to continue this item to our next meeting, which is March twenty-second?
Um, Maria, may I ask a question before we move on? Um, so there was something in the letter that we received today about this site becoming a retail recreational space in the future. Is, can you please address your thoughts about that?
I'm going to start off just Mr. Costa, and then I'll let him follow up the. It, I think what that statement says in there is that we are not asking to be one by right, that at any point in time where our use to change in any way beyond what we're asking for here today, that we would have to come back to this board or any other appropriate board under your regulations. That was our intent. Uh, Mr. Costa, please feel free to add anything.
No, I think you covered it.
Thank you. And I believe, Amy, you have made this, uh, determination and reference in, in prior projects as well.
Yep, that's correct. And it should be, um, specifically noted as, um, conditioned on approval as a strictly medical facility and future, um, future transition to, uh, recreational would require approval.
Thanks, Amy. Um, motion to continue? Uh, motion for Peter.
Maria, I think Jamie Rabbit has.
Oh, Jamie? Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you. I'm going to lay low on my hand. Um, again, from a staff's perspective, we received a significant amount of information tonight. Um, we're going to reserve our ability to comment both verbally with the applicant in meetings and, and writing. Um, some of the commentary that was provided by the applicant's team appeared in, in some manner could be considered contradictory to the written submission that they submitted, um, with regards to uh, push-through traffic on the site. You know, they're just simple things like their written information says they're going to have four employees who can handle ten people for a total of twenty-four in an hour, yet Mr. Costa, uh, proudly pronounced how efficient they are, and they can handle a client in five minutes. Oh, four times, five times an hour is forty-eight, which, you know, so what number are they using to do their traffic analysis? So if their staff, they handle forty-eight clients an hour, that's forty-eight in, forty-eight out. It's different than, uh, potentially the numbers they're using, which looks more in line with the numbers that other applicants are using. Uh, you know, there's infiltration on the site, yet we don't have any test pit data to determine whether the infiltration is suitable. The soils are suitable to manage that infiltration proposed. Uh, again, I think I weighed in on the traffic improvements, that I think that needs to be part of this process. Uh, and again, just would like a broader opportunity to look at the information, uh, discuss it with our team, uh, representing you as staff, and then, uh, have another meeting with the applicant and try and address some of these items. You know, their, their site plan calls for a painted island. There was testimony tonight that it's a raised island. If it's not done appropriately, um, I'll be the first one to drive over a raised island. I'll, I'll, you know, admit that for a record. Uh, you know, raised islands, unless they're done properly, and almost can cause damage to a car. Don't stop vehicles from making left-hand turns, uh, nor do no left-hand turns. Some of the responses, I think, tonight were, we can do this, we could do this. Uh, but there was, to me, no commitment that they will do this. Uh, you know, we could do a shuttle, but when they were questioned about their shuttle, they had no answers. They haven't secured an off-site location, so how can you commit to a shuttle if you haven't committed or secured an off-site location? Where that is and what the implications of shuttling people from that location are. So again, I, I have some questions. I'm sure the applicant and his team can answer, uh, a good majority of those. But I, I would support continuing this to your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Jamie. Those are, those are. those are exactly the sort of questions and level of detail that we are looking for.
We look forward to working with Jamie and his staff to address those questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second? Second from Joe, is there further discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, Paul, go ahead.
I just want to say that, you know, I said earlier, I think i- if there's a way to reduce the number of appointments, you know, we, we see a lot of traffic there rather than changing the road yet again. If we can limit the number of appointments to something that doesn't have a negative impact on traffic, I want to know if that's something that we can actually specify as a condition, and I'm guessing Amy's frowning, so.
Yep, you're, you're red in my face there. Um, I, I, I'm going to consult with staff on this, but we do need to have, we are able to impose reasonable, quantifiable, enforceable conditions, so we'll have to work on that in consultation with the applicant.
I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is I'm not in favor of making it possible to speed more cars through there more efficiently if there are other options. Making cars move faster isn't necessarily good for everybody.
Yeah, it'll ultimately, it will come down to just the board have enough evidence to conclude no adverse impact on traffic or any adverse impacts have been mitigated, and as you know, the zoning board will also have to make that determination at the special use permit hearing. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Jordan, we'd be, well, well, the applicant, I can safely say we'll be happy to work with your solicitor and your staff to address those type of concerns. Our goal is to service our clients in the best way, and I think you heard Mr. Costa say ideally, they'd be doing all delivery and off-site interactions with clients, so I know that's his goal, and I think we can work towards a goal that meets everybody's desires.
Thank you.
Yes. Jay.
I just have one, one point to offer to the board for consideration, and that's these special type conditions. Generally, I mean, provided there's valid justification for the condition that's imposed, the biggest problem with it is enforcement.
Yeah.
We're going to restrict the number of visitors to a site, how do, where does a town go out there and make sure they're doing it, number one, and number two, take corrective action to, to address that? I mean, I think some of those things, ponder these decisions, it's important to realize what we can really achieve and what, you know, what looks is very difficult to employ in the real world.
Thanks, Jay. I, I think that speaks to some of the questions this evening regarding the level of detail that's necessary, and in that way, we can ensure that if the level of detail is sufficient and specifics, as Jamie referred to, are brought forward early on, then it makes the burden of enforcement less of a burden. If there are no other comments, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hands, please.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will see you in March. Our next agenda item is request for adjustment of performance on major subdivision comprehensive permit, the Village at Curtis Corner. Jamie, this sounds somewhat familiar. You're muted.
All right, I'm trying to pull up a file while I'm speaking. So, Madam Chair, we got a request from the applicant through Eric Five A Builders associated with the monumentation at the Village at Curtis Corner. Eric Prevee sent us correspondence requesting that some of the monumentation be placed after construction activities are completed so that that monumentation does not get damaged, so I'm just going to summarize a brief memo that I have for the planning board. At the applicant Five A Builders, Village at Curtis Corner has requested the planning board approve the posting of an additional $20,000 to cover monumentation associated with the approved project. Consequently, and based on our review of the request, staff recommends the following motion. Motion to add an additional $20,000 to the $514,214.62 previously approved financial security associated with monumentation of the Village at Curtis Corner project. Said financial security must be submitted and received to the satisfaction of the town's finance department prior to recording of the final plan for the Village at Curtis Corner's major subdivision slash comprehensive permit project, the final form and fi- final form of the financial security. It'll be completed in consultation with the planning director and town's legal counsel.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions, comments for Jamie? If there are none, would someone like to make that motion? Thank you. A motion from Paul, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Peter. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Next item, request for adjustment of performance bond major subdivision Stone Bridge Townhouses. Jamie.
A little bit different than you spare with me? All right, I'm trying to pull up a file with limited screen space. So, Madam Chair, there is a project that is referred to as the Stone Bridge condo project. It's the former Church Street Townhouse project, and that's located off of Church Street at Assessor's Lot 48-3 Lot, L 33, AP 48-3 Lot, L 41. It was approved back in 2005. Tom, who is the present developer of that property, is looking for a certificate of occupancy, COs on the duplexes. The planning board originally had the developer back in 2005 post a financial surety in the amount of $28,000. Working with public service and looking at the amount to finish the work, it was an estimate of roughly $106,000. Actually, $108,000 with contingencies.
That's quite a difference.
Quite a difference between 2005 and 2022. Working with the developer, Mr. Kuluchi, and coming up with the estimate. We have a recommendation as follows, and, and I'll just, I have two quick paragraphs. The present developer of the former Church Street Townhouse project has requested a certificate of occupancy for one of the approved duplexes as part of our due diligence. Public service reviewed the project and determined that a number of items associated with the project's infrastructure need to be finished slash completed per the approved plans, and that the estimated cost associated with completing this work is $108,641. Since the developer presently has $28,000 posted with the town, it is recommended that Mr. Kuluchi supplement his existing financial security with an additional $70,641. The work that needs to be completed does not affect the functional functionality associated with the access to the completed unit. Therefore, staff recommends the following motion be approved by the planning board. Only authorized administrative officer to set the financial security associated with six lot subdivision located on the subtlety side of Church Street, APA 48-3 lots 133 and 141, as depicted on plans entitled Church Street Townhouse Subdivisions, AP 48-3 Lot 133, APA 48-3, Lot 141. Sheets C 1 through C 4 dated January 2005, scales as noted to $108,641. This amount shall consist of an existing $28,000 financial security held by the town and an additional $70,641 to be posted by the applicant in a form acceptable to the town. This amount may be reduced by the administrative officer in consultation with public service director based on review of the additional work completed and reviewed by town staff. Additional final type shall be reviewed by the planning director, finance director, and town council. And I'll just quickly, the potential reduction. Again, this is a moving target as Mr. Kuluchi continues to do work on the site. There's a possibility that he has finished all his monumentation and that monumentation's included in the $78,000. If it's verified that it's there, we'll reduce the bond appropriately in consultation with DPS to an appropriate amount. We will give you certainty on our side that there'll be sufficient funds available to complete the project.
Questions for Jamie? Jamie, just out of curiosity, was the, was the bond underrepresented, or does that or is this a cost of materials and labor in the
I think you know, it, it's hard for rich and/or I to speak to that since we weren't around back then. One example is the plant material list that was submitted to the town was not that I'm aware of submitted with an invoice number or a any real documentation that came from a nursery. That dollar amount was just south of $10,000 to purchase and deliver that material today is over $22,000 just on the landscape material, not including installation.
A lot of, a lot of this also deals with the, the time that, that, that happened, like, there was, there was a long span where that site just sat vacant, and so a lot of stabilization and the, the cleaning of the ponds and all those things, those are all add-ons. So there's a number of reasons why this dollar amount changed. Part of it's due to the cost, the, the cost difference, so just in, you know, inflation, I guess, but, but a lot of it has to do with the time that this sat.
And, excuse me, as a developer. Mr. Kuluchi, as a developer, has been working with both the planning board staff and public service with regards to wrapping up this project, calling for the appropriate inspection, so we anticipate that coordination to continue.
Very good. Thanks, Jamie. If there are no questions, would someone like to make the motion? Peter? Is there a second? Susan, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Final agenda item, zoning text and map amendment, South County Hospital.
Madam Chair, I believe we have Attorney Revins and Attorney Prescott coming in.
Very good. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening. Assume you have seen the final version and the motions.
We have, Madam Chair.
And is there agreement from your end on this language?
Yes, Madam Chair.
That's what we like to hear. Any thoughts, comments, questions from board members? We have two motions before us. The first one is pages aren't numbered, but if someone would like to make the first motion, motion 1A. Paul.
I will make that motion, but tell me what part of this I need to read because I'm still a little bit unclear on.
You should probably read the first two paragraphs and then outline the findings of fact and consistency with a comprehensive plan, which has numbers associated with it. And
Okay, let me take a shot at it. If I get it wrong, you'll tell me. South Kingston Planning Board hereby recommends approval by the South Kingston Town Council of the Zoning Text Amendment Application of South County Hospital, Inc. Seeking amendments to section 603, Government and Institutional GI Zone of the South Kingston Zoning Ordinance as detailed in exhibit 1A attached here too. The proposed amendments are intended to modify and modernize the regulatory requirements associated with submittal of institutional master plans by healthcare institutions located within government and institutional zoning districts. The board recommendations in this regard are based on the following findings of fact relating to consistency with the South Kingston Comprehensive Community Plan and the purposes of zoning as described in Rhode Island General Law Title 45, Chapter 24, Section 30, the Rhode Island Zoning Enabling Act of 1991, as noted below. And we have findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive plan, one with sub paragraphs A, B, and C, and D. And then findings of fact, consistency with purposes of zoning. Proposed amendments are consistent with the following general purposes of zoning as described in Rhode Island General Law Title 45, Chapter 24, Section 30. Specifically, and we have items 1, 2, 3, and then 11, 14, and 15. And I think that's everything.
Yes, thank you. We have a motion from Paul. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from here. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next motion is 1B. Similar in nature.
I'm willing to give it a shot.
Okay, thanks, Josh.
The South Kingston Planning Board hereby recommends approval by the South Kingston Town Council of the Zoning Map Amendment Application of South County Hospital, Inc. Seeking to remove all conditions associated with the zoning map amendments granted by the town council on May 29th, 2001, as detailed in exhibit 1B attached here too. The board recommends in this regard, the board recommendations in this regard are based upon the following findings of fact relating to consistency with the South Kingston Comprehensive Community Plan and the purposes of zoning as described in Rhode Island General Law Title 45, Chapter 24, Section 30, the Rhode Island Zoning Enabling Act of 1991, as noted below. And then there are the findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Numbers 1 A through D. And then findings of fact, consistency with purposes of zoning. Proposed amendments are consistent with the following general purposes of zoning as described in Rhode Island General Law Title 45, Chapter 24, Section 30, specifically numbers 1, 2, 3, 11, 14, and 15.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I think we missed a piece.
Nope. Did I?
We have findings of fact, sub paragraphs A through D, and then on the next page, I.
Oh, no, that's, so it's D.
Part of D.
Yeah, it's part of D.
Oh, I'm sorry, D1. Never mind.
That's okay, but very glad you're paying attention. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Paul, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And just wondering. What board members think about as this is conveyed to the council? Generally, there is a letter that goes along with it. Just wondering if it would be helpful to make a reference to the ongoing and I'm. And as I understand, it's recent in nature dialogue between the hospital and the neighbors relative to. Lighting improvements, reduction of noise that can be done in, in the immediate future. And perhaps Mr. Revins or Mr. Prescott can explain. What has happened with regard to that and if that could be referenced in the. In the interest of demonstrating a cooperative effort between the hospital and the neighborhood.
I think Mr. Prescott directed that, Madam Chair, so perhaps he could respond to it.
Very good.
Yeah, Andrew Prescott, General Counsel, South County Health. Uh, I think it was our last meeting that I suggested that if there were ongoing concerns. In the neighborhood that those neighbors. Reach out directly to South County Health and. We provided the name and contact information of Dave Fonce, who's the. Director of Facilities there. He's had some good productive conversations with. Members of the neighborhood. And, and done some walkthroughs with some of the neighbors. To look at lighting and, and condition, other conditions. There was also a noise issue raised with, I believe, some of the trash removal or dumpster servicing. Early in the mornings. The hospital immediately directed its vendor to. You know, delay their, their pickups to a more reasonable hour in the morning, so. There are, there are ongoing efforts to figure out. Any, any continuing points of concern with the neighbors and. Lighting is foremost among those and steps are being taken to. Make any changes that could be made in the short term before sort of implementation of a full lighting.
And, and you would not be. Adverse to the having this, having a, a cover letter to the council that referenced this. So that they would be aware of this ongoing cooperation.
No, it's, it's factual, it's just a statement of what's happening and if that's what you intend, that's perfectly acceptable to us.
Just an idea that I thought I'd throw out if board members are in agreement with that.
I do appreciate that, yes.
Jamie?
Yeah.
Jamie, you can come up with the language.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think it, it's a unique idea. I would just make the following suggestion that. The cover letter associated with the planning board's motions tonight. Be sent over in a very clean manner and then that the planning board. As stated by you this evening, send a second letter to the town council. And CC the hospital encouraging. Neighborhood coordination and that outreach that Mr. Prescott has described this evening.
Thank you, Jamie.
We can staple both letters together, but I, I'd like to.
That's fine.
As an alternative, but I think to keep the motion clean and that referral to them on that subject matter.
Yes.
But again, I, I fully support a follow-up letter or an attached letter. On the subject matter you discussed in that continued coordination that Mr. Prescott didn't have to do yet. Took it upon himself as an administrator of the hospital to do that.
Thank you, and of course, that's greatly appreciated. All right, thank you very much and I think all of us appreciate the, the thoughtful collaboration that has been a part of this application from. South County Health. Hard work from planning staff. Members on the planning board and the members of the public who participated in this process.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we do, we do also, we appreciate all of your help and cooperation and the planning staff, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. You too.
Other than a TRC volunteer. If somebody would like to, what do we have for a date on that, Jay?
Uh, that would be March 9th. Wednesday, Wednesday, March 9th.
Any volunteers? I will do it then, oh, Susan, was that?
Peter, you want to fight me for it?
Nope.
Good answer, Peter. Which of you would like to do this?
I'd be happy to do it. Do you want to, do you want to do it, Peter, I don't, whatever.
No, no, you do it, Susan, I'll do the next one after that.
Okay, that sounds good, now we have, now we're set for the next two months. All right, thank you, Susan, motion to adjourn.
Um, Josh, you have the next affordable housing meeting this month, right?
I do.
Thank you. So moved.
Okay, motion from Joe, second.
Second.
Second from Josh. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hands. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening and Jay sent out a memo today about the meetings we are having in March, so be sure to put those on your calendar. Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, everyone.